We have quorum.
Just a reminder to give your physical location. Councilmember Will Coxon.
President Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
President Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Somerville. Mayor Richardson.
President Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Morgan.
President Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance.
President, City of Ypsilanti County of Washington.
Councilmember Somerville. She was on. Okay, with five present, there is a quorum.
I'm moving Jennifer Simmons.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to excuse Councilwoman Simmons. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I make a motion to excuse Annie Somerville?
Second.
Been moved in second to excuse Councilwoman Somerville. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Mr. Helanga.
Council next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Someone.
There's support?
Sure, I can't even see that.
Or does someone have a change they want to make?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The agenda is approved. Thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is audience participation. There are currently three members in the attendees list. If you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand. You'll be permitted three minutes to address council. Doesn't appear that anyone has raised their hand. The next item is remarks from the mayor. Mayor, did you have any remarks currently?
Oh, wow. Okay, there are a couple of things. We do have two presentations today, and I guess I missed on the agenda that I was going to come before those presentations, but I will. I got a call on today from Mr. Jason Dixon, and he was the young man that came and presented. The 100 families, 100 homes wrote to a smart city to us a couple of weeks ago, and he was from a strategic alliance community development. And he was asking for a letter of intent. He's meeting with. He's meeting with Kellogg's on tomorrow, and I do know that we did, when he came, council did vote to look at or to research further that project. And I did get an email from the city manager just before the meeting tonight stating that that meeting was scheduled for this coming Monday. Is that correct, city manager? Okay, so I don't know what we would want to do about that if we're. If he's needing the letter tomorrow. So if we could. I don't know what council would want to do about that, so.
I have a question. Andrew, was that a motion? I didn't remember that.
Yes, it was. There was a motion to evaluate the program, not for a letter of intent.
Okay, to that, okay. Okay. So if we could possibly get that done as quickly, has staff done any research on it other than setting the meeting for Monday?
Yeah, I talked to some staff initially, and I definitely need additional information from them because staff's initial reaction was that. Why Ypsilanti Community Schools were providing hotspots and things like that for their students, and that Comcast was also giving. Services to those in need, some free and some at a very low cost. So there was some concern about what this project would add to what is currently being done in the community.
Okay, one thing I do know is that there are still a number of families that are not eligible for that reduced Comcast rate. The Comcast rate is basically for those people in the beginning, and I don't know if they've expanded it to those people living in New Park Ridge. And it was for $9 a month for as long as they were there. But I do know, and I've been talking with other people, that there are some families that really could use some low-cost internet service throughout. And the service, I don't know how the service is from this group, but I do know that there's been some people that have also had some issues with Comcast service. I know when I had Comcast service, it wasn't always, always functioning, so I don't know. But when you said do some research, were you talking about looking outside of just our city staff?
One of the other issues about. I don't know how to say it, the program was that. It included, as I said, it said Ypsilanti Community Schools, and Ypsilanti Community Schools currently pays for those services. And that was the one thing, but the other one was there is nothing to measure by, because if you remember, they said we were a pilot.
Right.
When you say, so we don't have anything to, all I can do is talk with them and continue to question them. But as far as research goes, we are a pilot, as I remember, and that they're still seeking investors. So that is from their presentation too.
Right.
So I have additional questions for them, because I don't have any references to call or anything like that to know what the reliability would be, because they've never done this before. So that's kind of where I am with that, but I do have a meeting scheduled and have some questions for them. But compared to what we have now and to what we, we don't know what we're going to get, I'm not sure that. I'll just see what they have to say. I'm willing to engage them and see how this will benefit the city and the overall citizens. But they did basically say they wanted to market the schools and things of that nature, and I know that that is something that Ypsilanti Community Schools are already providing that. So I will look into it more, and I have other questions. I'll have Councilmember Morgan and the clerk on with me as well and another staff member so that we can vet this properly.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. The other thing that that I wanted to talk about for my remarks tonight was the. Wow, and it saddens and overwhelms my heart when I think of the killing of the young 20-year-old by the police officer there in. Oh, gosh, I'm not sure if it's Brightonton, if that's the name of the place, but I, right there near Minneapolis. And. I thought it, and I had a couple of people say it out loud to me, that that really could be Ypsilanti. We have a relatively small police force. We do have. Our officers are provided with tasers. And I know we have gotten reports of our police officers using tasers. In fact, whenever a taser is used, we get a, we get a, we get a report on it. But I'm just wondering, how thoroughly trained are our officers with the taser? It just seems almost impossible for me to believe that someone could pull their gun and think they're pulling their taser. Having felt both of them, there's such a difference in the weight, but it is something that I think that we might need to, to look at. Doing some, some more training with our officers, not to say that they haven't been trained. Chief Tony, I see you, you're showing yourself. Not to say that they haven't been trained, but have they been trained sufficiently? Do we need to add to that training? It is such a, that was such a, I think, just such a horrible. If it was a mistake, it was a horrible mistake. I did hear the, in the press conference, I didn't hear all of it, I heard part of the press conference today while I was in my car. And they have, that particular city had an ordinance that I would like for us to, regarding their police, that I would like for us to get a copy of. What I heard really. It intrigued me. I wanted to hear more of it. So if we could get a copy of that ordinance. And Chief Tony, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, Mayor, this is not the first time that this kind of incident has happened. It's happened in the past, in other places in the country where a weapon has been mistaken. So we have taken great lengths to ensure that we're doing everything we can to prevent that kind of an accident from happening. Not only do our officers go through initial training phase, they are trained every six months again in the use of the taser along with other defensive tactics. As well as they're required to have placement of the taser in a cross-draw fashion on the opposite side of their body of their weapon, their duty weapon. So that there would really be no mistaking of where you're going to get what your, whatever tool it is that you think you need for the particular mission you're on. So I would love to be able to say that this will never ever happen here or ever again anywhere, but we are doing all the things that we can to make sure that it doesn't happen here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Well, I do think in the ideal of talking about training, we are talking about consistent things like humans in high-pressure situations with lethal weapons. And in 2015, right here in Ann Arbor, when our roster was killed, when she was shot twice and she was deployed with a taser at the same time in her body. So it was two different cops, they both pulled different weapons, but she still ended up murdered. So we're talking about people who have instinctual training and the ability to process high-pressure situations. And I know police are trained in that all the time, but still, human error is still can cause loss of life, and that's something that, of course, it's where people can be at fault. So these things can happen, and they do happen. And so I don't know if it's mistaken or accident, but it still ends up where a loss of life when these things take place. So I don't know if something training can, I know training can mitigate risk, but nothing can fully eradicate the risk of danger when humans and lethal weapons are involved.
True. Anyone else comment?
Did we change the order of the agenda?
No, there's remarks from the mayor following audience participation on every single agenda. It's not, it's not proposed business, or it's, it's not communication. They're just remarks after the audience participation.
Okay, if there are no other comments, that's all that I have for right now.
Next item on the agenda is presentations. It's AAAATA Ypsilanti Transit Center expansion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Jesse Miller, your representative on the AAAATA board. And we're here tonight to ask, seek your support in requesting federal earmark to pay for a new and expanded bus terminal in downtown Ypsilanti. While AAAATA is leading this project, these requests always stand a better chance when the community is behind them. And to that end, we'd like to ask your assistance by providing a formal letter of support to Congresswoman Debbie Dingell. And I'll hand things off now to our CEO, Matt Carpenter, who can provide some more detail.
Thank you, Jesse, and remember, Madam Mayor, members of council for time on your meeting this evening. As some of you may remember, Jesse and I stopped by before the pandemic to brief council on our vision for an expanded public transit center in downtown Ypsilanti. We've been working on this for several years. And we're talking about the Ypsilanti Transit Center, the downtown bus terminal on Pearl Street. This terminal serves all of Ypsilanti and all of its residents, but it's simply too small to meet our growing needs and the needs of your community. Our vision for this project is to demolish the existing facility and build a much larger facility on the same site. We've worked with the city and residents on this project before the pandemic. Some of you may have attended some of those public meetings. And I think we've got a pretty good vision and conceptual plan. However, a major sticking point was the need for funding. We estimate the project is probably going to cost us about $16 million in capital funding. Now, recently, as some of you are probably aware, federal earmarks have reemerged as a potential funding source. One deadline that's rapidly approaching this week is for submitting earmarks, earmark requests to Representative Dingell's office for transportation projects specifically. And this is great news in terms of potential funding for this project. The challenge is the deadline is this Friday, so we're trying to move very quickly. And although we know it is short notice, and there are many questions we still need to work through with you and residents, we would like to ask you for your support by submitting a formal letter of support on behalf of this project before the deadline. We believe the project does have a chance of winning an earmark, and that would solve the funding challenge and allow us to jumpstart the entire effort. Ultimately, the choice of the earmarks is up to Representative Dingell. She will make her decisions, and I know she already has many worthy applications. But with your support, we can at least put this project in front of her for her consideration. With that, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you very much, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Carpenter, when would you believe that the earmarks were made potentially available?
Was the question when?
Yes.
So the notices of applications have come out only very recent. Everyone in the, in the country is scrambling to get their paperwork together to submit. The earmark in question that we're asking for is for the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill. That would be hopefully approved in September. It would be a six-year funding bill. And, you know, frankly, we don't control exactly when, but hopefully sometime during that six-year period, the construction funding would be made available.
Okay. I was wondering, like, you know, since the last time you seen us, and a lot of probably questions you probably want to ask, and a lot of more information you want to give us, but now the deadline is Friday. So you want to put the cart before the horse and give the letter of recommendation and then come back and give us more information?
Unfortunately, that is kind of the situation we're in. We wouldn't want to miss this deadline, but we absolutely understand that we need to come back and work with the city and the entire community to make sure the design of this project is what we all know it needs.
Mr. Morgan, if I may, I received a, an email from Kelly T. Bay just a couple of weeks ago that she sent out to mayors and supervisors throughout the 12th district. And so they, the letter just came out, like I said, for this particular earmark just a couple of weeks ago, and it was on a very short, short timeline, so. When it came out.
And if I could speak, I'm on, I'm on the Transit Board Member Committee for the American Public Transportation Association, and there was a conversation at our last meeting. All transportation authorities across the country are kind of in this situation of having to rush to get everything together. No one's really happy with the timing. We'd all be like to be able to be much more deliberate about it, but it is kind of the situation everyone is in.
That's cool. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Are you, anything else, Jesse or Matt, that you want to add? Okay.
So I'd like. I have a quick question. Oh, sorry.
Annie, yes.
Go ahead with your question. Yeah, sorry. It's mainly, I think it's primarily for the city manager. Are we, so do we need to give you, do we need to like, does somebody need to initiate a motion tonight? Okay, cool. Awesome. I'm happy to make the motion. Thank you, Jesse and Matt, for being here and pulling this, pulling what you can together on short notice. I know how hard that is, so.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't, do you want me to make the motion?
Oh, I thought you said you.
I didn't, I didn't know if Francis had anything else to add.
Oh, okay. No, you said I was, what I was going to say.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I would like to make a motion to give the city manager, to go ahead and give the city manager support from city council for this earmark.
I second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Any questions, comments? Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, I have a question. Have any other municipalities, you know, either Superior or Ypsie Township been solicited for support as well? Or do you think that could, could help in any way?
We have sought and received support from the county administrator, Greg Dill, and you were the next on my list. Obviously, I needed to start with the city because the project is in your municipality. But if I'm successful this evening with, with you, I do intend to reach out to the neighbors because they share many of the same bus routes. So that's our plan.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Helanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Member Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Yes.
Motion was six yes votes.
Thank you. And city manager, if you would work with Mr. Carpenter and get that letter of support in, we would appreciate it. Thank you. And Mr. Carpenter, thank you for bringing this project. It's something that, it's, it's long overdue, that we needed a new transits center, so all the best. We just hope that we get the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
And Jesse, thank you for all of the work that you do regarding AAAATA and the city. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by A.J. Ali and Nat Austin regarding community projects grant application.
Madam Mayor, you want me to start, or A.J. is running a little late?
No, would you please start? Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nat Austin, and it's A-L-S-T-O-N. I'm not a citizen of Ypsilanti, but been doing some work up there. And what we're basically proposing is a letter of support from the city to our project of a grant that's being, that's an earmark from Congresswoman Debbie Dingell that will allow us to bring in Love is the Answer Movement to the city of Ypsilanti. As citizens and all, with most of you probably have heard of Walking While Black: Love is the Answer. This grant will help us to dig a little bit deeper in putting together a mentoring program. Also, do some training and teaching for as the youth in there, scholarships and all. I'm really running a, the person that will really give you a lot more detail, and he's out of Henderson, Nevada, who is the producer of the film and the book Walking While Black: Love is the Answer, is A.J. Ali. He's running a little bit late, but I hope that most of you not have seen the document, I'm assuming that you have. As to what this grant proposal will be, it does not affect the budget far as the city of Ypsilanti. It would basically would be a logistical aspect, but part of the implementation of the grant in terms of training and also in terms of developing the relationships with the school and the students there will be the responsibility of Love is the Answer Movement and our national organization, the National Association of African-Americans in Human Resources. And I'm hoping in the next two to three minutes that A.J. Ali, the producer and the author of the book Love is the Answer and Our Movement, will be coming on. I did reach out to him, and like I said earlier, he's out in Henderson, Nevada, and he's en route to get to the, a place where he can respond to you with any questions that I can't answer, but he can. And Mayor, if you want to maybe add a little bit to that, because what we're looking for is your participation as well as the approval of the Ypsilanti City Council.
Yes, I, just to back up a little bit on the history of the involvement of Mr. Austin and the film Walking While Black: Love is the Answer. Mr. Austin mentioned the group that he is the founder and now the executive chair of the National Association of the African-Americans in HR. They were approached by the, someone in the Ypsilanti Office of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They, I guess he called them Leo was, was the one. He called and invited them to come to Ypsilanti. They were looking for a place, they happened to be looking for a place for their 20th anniversary. And they had never heard of Ypsilanti. They knew of Ann Arbor. They knew of Detroit. And somehow Leo convinced them to come and have a look. And when they came to Ypsilanti, they were really quite impressed, and Mr. Austin himself fell in love with Ypsilanti. So they came and they had their 20th anniversary conference at the Ypsilanti Marriott. And that was in September, I believe, of 2018. However, in February of 2018, Mr. Austin, without Mr. Ali, showed the film. The first showing of the film was at Park Ridge Community Center, and I was attended that showing. And when I, I was really quite affected by the, just the opening scenes themselves, showing what is going on, what we've all seen on the news throughout the country. The actual murder and the stopping of young black men and young black women and what was happening to them by police. And watching the film, the film is actually the story, and there he is, and he's going to tell us his own story. However, the National Association of African-Americans in HR, under the leadership of Mr. Austin, as I said, he fell in love with Ypsilanti. And they began to look around and see what they could actually do here, what kind of work they could do and to be of service to the city. And they signed a five-year MOU with the school district. At that time, Mr. Ben Edmondson was the superintendent. They signed a five-year contract, an MOU, to work with the school district for improvement. The school district where Mr. Austin leads, Howard County, it started. it started out, as we were told, very much like in the state where Ypsilanti schools, YCS schools are now, but now they are in the top five school districts in the whole nation. And the principles that were used there, he committed to use those same principles to working and working with YCS. And one of the first things that was done was to establish a council of elders. You'll hear more about that as time goes on, but I don't want to talk with Mr. Ali here himself. So, Mr. Ali, would you go on and present your proposal to us, please? Thank you.
And Nat, feel free to join in with me as well.
Sure.
So we are very happy with what has happened so far. And now I'm gonna let you say a few words before I dive into the details.
Well, I've done it already, A.J., so I let you dive in really in terms of the proposal in there.
All right. Thank you. And hi, everybody. So we're looking at securing congressional funding to deepen our work in Ypsilanti. It's one of just a few markets around the country that we're taking this next step with. Ypsilanti has been just a real jewel of a place with Nat coming in many, many times and working with with everyone. And we have, we have a budget that we've put together. It's about $119,000 that we're going to be asking the Congresswoman Dingell's office for their blessing to request from what is called community project funding. Out of that 119,000, a little bit more than half, 60,000, is for the the training of 2,000 people. That will include books and film links and materials and training for Love is the Answer mentoring circles. And these mentoring circles are designed to teach people the Love is the Answer principles at a very deep level. And then surround one person, a young person, a returning citizen, anyone who is in need of help to get to the next level, so to speak. Surround them with four people from the community that have been trained on the Love is the Answer principles. And these folks will be their personal advisory board. And we've we've tested this in other markets. It's worked beautifully. People have been just really surprised at how much they get out of being a Love is the Answer mentoring circle member. They think they're, you know, just there to support that person in need, so to speak. But the returns to everyone involved are great, and it really enhances a sense of civic responsibility and social responsibility. It gets people to become better givers, and that is good for the entire community. So 60,000 to train 2,000 people. Another 16,000 for staffing of and facilitation of 20 screening and discussion events and similar to the ones that have have been done, but with breakout rooms and and deeper levels of teaching. $10,000 to train 10 Love is the Answer certified film and book event facilitators in Ypsilanti area schools and other organizations. Again, taking the great work that Nat has spearheaded and and now training up an army of people to become facilitators of the film and the book. 10,000 for a fellowship award. We actually have three different categories of fellowship and scholarship awards. And $10,000 would go to a grad student, someone who is studying in the local area, someone who has demonstrated a desire to lead. And this person would study and quantify the effects of of Love is the Answer in Ypsilanti, as well as assist the Ypsilanti Council of Elders and other groups with all things related to Love is the Answer. We have one fellow on board so far, and that's Trey Carlisle, the young man who was in my film at 17. He's now 22. And he became our first Love is the Answer fellow, doing great work. And we actually surround that person with with a group of leaders to help guide them and shape them and lead them. So again, building into the community. The other two things that I mentioned are scholarship awards, one for a college scholar and one for a high school scholar. And these would be young people who are demonstrating a desire to make an impact, positive impact, social justice in Ypsilanti. It would be 2,500 to go to the collegiate scholar and $500 to go to the high school scholar, along with mentoring and other other things. Remaining budget items, $10,000 for discretionary project funding, and this is exciting because these would be 20 grants of $500 each that Ypsilanti residents could apply for to do something special in the community, whether that's to fund creation of a mural painted by students and peace officers together or refurbishing, you know, some some building or whatever it is that can be done together, police, other members of the community, working together to to better relationships and better opportunities in Ypsilanti. Let's see, $5,000 of that would go to the N-triple-A-H-R to support their role in providing H.R. expertise and other resources as we as we go deeper. $5,000 towards a matching grant for a love garden. And a love garden would be simply a small plot of land. Maybe there's a garden already that that needs to be refurbished or a piece of land that hasn't been used, minimum 500 square feet, preferably a couple thousand square feet or more. And this would be a place of healing, a place where people could go and and garden, not not individual plots like a typical community garden, but a garden that would be tended to by everyone. And to give you an idea, in Compton, California, the Sheriff's Department and the young people there that participate in their youth activities league, they created a garden right there that they're building. And they generated more than 10,000 pounds of food to be given to elderly people in the community who were food insecure. What an amazing thing that that was for them and could be in Ypsilanti. And that's something that, again, is a proven way of strengthening relationships in the community. And as I like to say, make your friends before you need them. So this would be a place where deep friendships would be developed so that it would help Ypsilanti to continue to avoid any negative circumstances like we're seeing in other parts of the country. So that's it. That's the that's the 119,000. And I believe there could be some, Lois, I don't know if you've mentioned this, but we're looking at an additional amount for the city itself to cover any associated costs, so pertaining to administrative program. And I, and one last thing I'll say is that we'll do 98% of the work in terms of administering administering the program. It really won't be a strain on the city in terms of human power or financial resources, and it will add a tremendous amount of value to the to the public health and public safety.
And I might add to that just briefly for our city council. If you didn't know, we got, the city of Ypsilanti has a lifetime licensing agreement to show the film Love is Walking While Black: Love is the Answer. It was the first city in the U.S. to do that. And also, we've gotten a universal licensing agreement from the Sheriff's Department there in Washtenaw County to also show the film. So we're for their officers there. And just recently, we've set a date for that universal licensing agreement by the Sheriff's Department to show that May 8th to Beth Israel in Ann Arbor. So we really wanted to make, let you all know that, as Mayor Richardson stated, I personally made a commitment to make a difference there with, along with you here in Ypsilanti. Tony DeGussi knows that. I've been there prior to the COVID pandemic. I was up there in Ypsilanti once a month for for about a year. And so we're still committed to help and make a difference there. And we feel that by this particular grant, as A.J. mentioned, we will be doing 98% of the work to make a difference and help you make a difference in the city. So again, thank you, Mayor.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you both, A.J. and Nat. Counsel, you received a copy of the proposal. Are there any questions or comments after hearing from these two gentlemen? Annie?
I, yeah, um, I have a question about the first, the $60,000 amount for books and training. Is there anything else? Like, is there any more detail on that? Because there's also all the other money that's allocated for like community investment and facilitating. It just seems like some of that's already listed in the other amount. So I'm just trying to understand the $60,000.
It's not duplicated anywhere, but I will give you more detail on that if you like. In the proposal, it states $60,000 to buy 2,000 Love is the Answer books and 2,000 mentorship training that teach participants the basics of how to create and participate in Love is the Answer mentoring circles. These books and trainings will be given to police, teachers, media, ministry leaders, nonprofit leaders, students, and other community influencers. The Love is the Answer book, which is a textbook, is the centerpiece of the curriculum. In the book, we share 25 lessons and offers, and we offer 25 activities people can do to immediately put Love is the Answer principles into action. Reconciliation experts from across the country share their real-life experiences in the book, along with lessons they've learned, best practices, and ways to foster reconciliation in communities. Essentially, we're throwing the training in for free. The books themselves cost $30 apiece. And that also, again, we're pretty much throwing the training portion of that in at no cost.
I might, I might add, I thought about it when A.J. was speaking. He talked about Trey. Trey, there has already been a commitment made to oh, educate youth. And Trey has been, along with another member of the Love Group, they have been meeting. I'm not sure exactly how often, and but I know it's been a few times virtually that they have met with the students there that are a part of in the Educate Youth program. And I do believe we have, I believe I saw Gail Walcoff in the audience. If she is, Gail, would you be willing to speak to us a little bit about the involvement that the Love is the Answer Group has had with Educate Youth? Is she still with us, Andrew? Gail, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. Are you willing to share a little bit with with us about the involvement with your group?
If it's acceptable to counsel.
Yes.
First of all, hello. What a surprise. I'm I'm avoiding bringing the students back inside to watch movies because they're outside playing in the sunshine. We have been the timeline that that I'm gonna take my mask off because nobody's inside. The timeline that we're talking about is for several times, the students from Educate Youth watched the movie Walking While Black and then participated in it was with adults. And last summer, the students asked me to watch the movie on their own with A.J. Nat and Melvin, who is the sheriff. I don't have his exact title. Who's in the movie, and they wanted to watch the movie on their own, not identified as teenagers, not identified as black, not identified as, you know, males, females. They just wanted to watch the movie on their own. We did that this fall, and it was amazing watching the movie. Or I watched them watch the movie and Trey and A.J. and Nat facilitated the movie because I just stepped out from or didn't step out, but I didn't want to be involved in the conversations. It's not a journey that I've walked. And so the students came up with, were given a challenge. And the challenge that they were given was to go shopping, or the students came up with the idea of going shopping with officers and not shop with the cop traditionally that happens around the holiday time, but going shopping with officers. Just a second. Your pot pie is on the going shopping with officers, and they had to decide what they were gonna buy. It's just, it was a two-way street. Their job is they need to find a family to donate the money to. As this project has happened, we've had people donate more money. So at this point in time, the students have $300, and then we had somebody do a matching funds up to $1,000. So we potentially have, you know, a chunk of change. We have the officer from the Ypsilanti Police Department, Officer Tate, who is gonna go shopping. He's the person who plays basketball with the students all the time, comes around and plays basketball. And then we have somebody from the Sheriff's Department, who I don't know who that is, to go shopping. So our next step is to watch the movie with the two police officers or the police officer and the deputy for them to make a decision. Well, first of all, to watch the movie, have a conversation, and then decide when they're going shopping at that time for the families in a nutshell. And then there's been lots of tangents along the way where you give the students some ideas and they go crazy.
And if I can add to that real quick, really, what we're looking at is using that as a model to go deeper, as A.J. mentioned, to identify other students and other organization, Annie, to drive it home deeper. And I hope that answers what you, your question.
Thanks. Um, I have another question about just like some of the way that the the money is like broken down for allocation. The, um, the $10,000 for discretionary with regards to the gardens, but then there's also like the 5,000 for the matching grants for the garden fund. Like, can you explain, like, the difference between, like, I guess I'm confused a little bit. What's the $10,000 going to be used for? Wouldn't we just, like, wouldn't it make sense to just make $15,000 available for grant matching?
No, the the purpose of it, the 10,000, the way we worded it is above and beyond the the monies that are allocated for the garden. The garden or gardens would be a centering place in the community that would have space for certainly growing fruits and vegetables and herbs and spices, but also a place for acoustic music and spoken word and other things, a place for but also a place for acoustic music and spoken word and other things, a place for indoor learning during inclement weather, a place for meditation and reflection. There's a component in that garden that includes an art project where the letters L-O-V-E would be framed out and filled in with things that are meaningful to the folks there in Ypsilanti. And so that would be a gathering place, a gathering point, a place of healing. The other ten thousand dollars would be available for community members to apply for, to do community projects, things that would enrich the community outside of that garden. So now we're, just picture a circle with the garden in the middle of it, and then twenty other projects floating around in that circle all throughout town. So that eventually, wherever you go, you're gonna see a reminder of what it means when people come together to do something special. So that's the separation there. The garden is one thing, and the other monies would go towards other projects, murals, music, art, any other things that inspire people.
Okay, I just have one, I guess I have one more question just with regards to the sixty thousand dollars for the books. So the books, like, the cost is thirty, but how much does it actually cost to produce each book? Like, what's the, like, at cost, like, production?
Well, that's the price that we sell them for. I don't release figures of how much it costs us to make them, but they sell for thirty dollars a piece, so that's what they're selling for now, cities, companies, Homeland Security, you name it, people are buying them in bulk. This recent, we had an order of seven hundred and fifty books from Bucks County, the county commissioner there. So again, we're basically throwing in the training portion of that for free, which is essentially another thirty dollars per person. So it's a value.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're on mute, Mayor.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Mayor, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. I will call upon you, I saw your hand, Mayor Protem. And I do want to say that we are past the twenty minutes that was allotted for the presentation. But we have questions, council has questions, and we do need to act upon this this evening. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
I have two more, like, logistical questions, I guess, from the application. And so in the first question of the application, it talks about who could apply for this grant, and it could also be a nonprofit and clearly a municipality. So can someone tell me maybe why we didn't choose to go with like a partnership with an existing nonprofit, like Educate Youth that already has some experience working with this group rather than the city itself being the fiduciary of the grant?
Because when we talked with Kelly Tebe, Congresswoman Dingles' representative, she instructed us to use the city. That's why.
Sorry, I'm muted again, my bad. Okay, thank you. And then my other question was about the stakeholders. So I think it asks for letters of support, but I didn't see those attached to the application. I know there were spots in this application that were still incomplete in other areas. How did we come up with the list of stakeholders? So for instance, it says council members and city manager, but this is our first presentation about this. So as being listed as a stakeholder, like, how do we come up with the list if we don't have documentation to show that all these people are in support? Because I just want to make sure that we're not putting something forward we don't have the actual, like, documented support for something.
Support letters are coming in. And I don't think, though, I think the city manager and council was put there, or mayor and city council was put there because council would need to vote on this, whether they would support it or not, so.
And then will there be the spaces where I think, Mayor, there are some items for you to provide? When will we receive that information?
Because I have passed that on, I forwarded that to the city manager and to the clerk, and I believe I CC'd Mr. Barrow on that also, saying that these were numbers that the city would need to provide. And I did not want to put those in there, I felt that they should come from the city manager, knowing the budget and knowing how much those things, she could talk to staff and come up with how much those things would actually need, how much would need to be put in there. That's why what you got was still a draft, it was not complete, completed, so. So I'm supposed to put in there the contact person? Because those are. No, you're supposed to put, know that the amount, the amount, and who would be, who would be the contact person at the city? We know that the Mr. Basikaba, Basabika, excuse me, I murder your name all the time, please forgive me, Reagan. We know that he would be the one that would be handling the money as it came through, as the city would be acting as the fiduciary. But still, there would need to be a person that would be the contact person. And ultimately, I always thought in terms of that being the city manager, so. Okay, I was just going by what I saw on the application, which had your name and said that you were going to put that in there. So I did not. No, okay, excuse me, when he, they put my name several places because just those were things that I needed to make sure that they were taken care of, not that I would be the person that did that. Okay, all right, seeing no other pressing hands. Yes, Steve?
I think there were other hands, I just wasn't sure where that conversation was going.
Andy, Andy, Councilwoman.
I can wait until you.
No, go ahead.
I didn't see, I didn't see your hand, Councilmember Somerville, I am sorry, I just didn't see it.
It's okay, if Stephen and Anthony have questions, I can go after them.
Give you a second.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I have met Nat, and I have seen the screening of this. I think I was there at the church with the chief of police and had met with, I think, Nat downstairs for dinner afterwards with a bunch of the kids from Educate Youth. It's a great movie. It's a powerful movie in and of itself, and I can imagine it's effective at starting the conversations. Most of my questions are administrative for this. You know, this is kind of short notice, and, you know, as unlike with the AAA TA, you know, we had seen that proposal before, so we were familiar with that. We understood what the design was gonna be and going from there. This is the first time we've seen this come up. I haven't had a whole lot of time to digest all of this information. But, you know, the proposal for training two thousand people, that's roughly ten percent of our population. And, you know, I can imagine that, you know, by having that commitment and that many people, it kind of ensures the effectiveness of that. If you've got ten percent of your population thinking on this level and trained for this, then your efficacy is gonna go way up. And the question is, is like, where are those people gonna come from? And what are they gonna be the recruiting tools for that? You know, there's lots of questions like that that come up, and I realize this is, you know, put together on a short basis. So I've got a lot more questions. So if you could address that, and I'll whittle through my questions and make them brief.
If I could speak to the timeline, this too was one, is an earmark that was released on a very, very short time. It was, and the initial deadline was March thirty-first, but Congresswoman Dingles had her office extended the time, not just for this group, but for other groups. I think in that, those earmarks, there were probably maybe about ten, close to ten, different categories that could applications be made, and that's what, it's the same, under the same umbrella that the AA TA is operating under. There were just different, the umbrella is the whole earmarks thing, but there were different slots under there. So this is one of those, and it was all released on a very, very short timeline. And so the, it has been, the timeline was extended by Congresswoman Dingles' office to get these in, so.
Got it, and this, while it fits into the general earmark category, the funding for this would come from a different federal fund, and so there's no competition in that. Has this been implemented on this level in another community? And I have to say that I was a little taken aback by the use of the words markets rather than communities. So I reacted negatively to that, and I understand as, you know, as a person selling a book that you wrote, that is, that is, the way you look at it, it's just not, doesn't have to be the way I look at it. So has this been implemented in other communities on this level?
So we have gone very deep in Bucks County, Pennsylvania. That is probably the deepest that we've gone in any community. And we do say, Steve, we do say communities when we're talking about individual communities. We're looking at regions or markets from the broader perspective. You know, so semantics, apologies for, you know, for anything that may have offended you in the way that we wrote that. We're deeply committed to building communities. And in Bucks County, we started with just the DA licensing the film. And from there, it has grown tremendously to where more than thirty of the forty police departments in that county have now pledged to use the Love is the Answer principles as their guide star. There's a high school there that has made our film required viewing for seniors for graduation. The county itself has had all of its employees, twenty-three hundred of them, trained by the same people that will be assisting with screenings and discussions in Ypsilanti. And other things have happened, it's actually spread throughout the state of Pennsylvania now because of that. So in going deep in Bucks County, we've set, we've put together a model that works. And the new element is going deep with the mentoring circles. That's fairly new in terms of a set program. However, we've been testing that out since the film came out in 2017, and it's gone very, very well.
Thank you. I guess I didn't get an answer to the previous question.
I'm sorry, can you ask that one again?
Yeah, the recruiting for the two thousand people, where will, how will that be addressed within the community?
I think that's open for discussion, is for me, I would say, let's make it exciting. You know, let's make it something that we, first of all, we go to all the people who have seen the film, all the people who have participated, and then get them on board and go out in concentric circles from there. I've got fifty-seven, I've got thirty-five plus years in cause event marketing and event production and movements, bringing city governments and county governments and celebrities and media and citizens together to do, you know, really incredible things. And this is one of those moments where the people of Ypsilanti who have participated in this can commit and then reach out to the people that they know and get others to join them.
Yeah, and Steve, let me chime in really on that. That's, to be quite candid, to answer your question, that's where I come in. In terms of that commitment of two thousand people, I will tell you right now, I know at least one hundred people in the city of Ypsilanti right now. And I say that not just with Gail and you and Mayor Richardson, Tony and others, but I've spent at least two and a half years up there in Ypsilanti, as many of you know. And when I come up there, I don't do one day, I spend four days up there. And I was up there, I think, before the COVID hit, 2019, I was up there every month for at least four days of that month. We've shown that film to at least ten churches up there. So when you tell me a goal of two thousand, I told AJ, to me, that's easy, I know I can do it. I've been in HR recruitment for years, establishing that relationship. I don't see that as a stumbling block, but a goal to reach.
So I guess my other questions, I'll limit it to two here, but they have to do with execution of this and the fiduciary responsibilities. I mean, this is, we're asking our Congresswoman for a favor, you know, and, you know, to me as a councilperson, you know, those don't come often, and they don't come lightly. And I think that my colleagues will agree to that as well. So this is an opportunity, and it comes with an opportunity cost. And I realized that there isn't a comprehensive plan for an alternative. You know, I work in the world of RFPs, and so, you know, with one proposal, we're kind of looking at, well, what else is possible? And with the short timeframe, that has me a bit leery, but I, you know, I don't even know who to address this to. You know, what is the feedback from, you know, Congresswoman Dingles' office in terms of, you know, how much do they know, how much, you know, conversation has gone into this?
I will answer that one. We've met with Kelly Tebe twice, and the first time Kelly was extremely excited and more excited. And by the second time, within the same week, she had, in fact, she told us she ordered the book the exact same day that she first met with us, and she had not seen the movie. I don't, she still hasn't seen the movie, but throughout the conversation and reading what you have read and was presented, she was extremely excited about it. I saw her yesterday, and she was still excited about it. So, and encouraging us to get it in. So that's all I can tell you. Haven't talked with Congresswoman Dingle about it, haven't really felt that that was, you know, in order right now, was just dealing with Kelly.
And Congresswoman Dingle hasn't seen the movie at any of the showings in Ypsilanti?
I don't believe she's been at any of the showings.
So my last question, I realized Mr. Morgan is sitting there reading. What does this look like in terms of execution or implementation from city staff point of view? Mr. Reagan Basabika would obviously be that, but in terms of oversight of this program, and it goes back to, we're asking our congressperson to do us a favor as the city, as a fiduciary, but it seems like this needs to be more of a partnership than just a clearinghouse for the checks that go through. And we have other relationships with friends of groups and things like that. So, you know, either, yes, either Reagan or Francis could address that. That would be helpful.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes, that's also my question. So once we receive the money, we usually have a grant manager who will now sign off on the checks. Just so we know that those invoices that will be paid off are valid. So I think we would need to have a. So I think we would need to have a person that will be handling, handling that responsibility.
And when you say invoices, you're talking about for every expenditure that they make, we need invoices.
Yes.
And we'd have to sign off on them.
We, we need some, we need someone, we need the grant manager to sign off on them. So, uh, cause like for the city staff, we, we know that uh, there will, there will be invoices coming in, but we're not, uh, we need someone that will be responsible on making sure that those invoices are valid.
And we don't have that person on board at this time?
Yeah, we, we, we would have to appoint someone, but for our, for our grants, we do. I think he's asking that question because they said they would do ninety-eight percent of the work. So we're saying, I think he's saying that if we are the fiduciary, we need to assign a grant manager in our office and that we need to sign off on everything because there are grant standards, am I right, Reagan? Right? So if it's in our name, we want to ensure that they meet them. I guess that's, I can't speak. But I think that's what he's saying. And I think that is saying, saying.
Yeah, we understand that. Yeah, we understand that, yes.
So that's what our two percent. I'm asking, cause you said you guys would, you wanna take that, please?
That's correct.
It doesn't sound like two percent of the work. Um, I actually, city manager, I, I mean, I'm a little curious, like, do we have the staff to do this, like the staff time?
Well, definitely, um, we have applied for a lot of grants ourselves. So, um, the earmark bringers have piqued us and so we have applied for quite a few things ourselves. So I know that our staff will be busy administering those and managing those. Um, we will probably, you know, if the grant is awarded, have to, you know, make do, we, if we had to hire someone to, to, uh, do this, we would, um, hope that they would pay for it out of their grant. That's just my thoughts off the top of my head.
And that was, I believe, part of the, the, the question that, um, where it said that the city um, put in the amount that they would need, that the city would need to cover the expenses, any expenses that would be incurred by the city, so. Mister Morgan has had his hand up for a long time and we really, time wise, we far exceeded our time.
I'm gonna make this short as I possibly can, and I'm a attempt, well, first I want to say thank you, Mr. Austin and Mr. AJ for coming. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try not to ramble, but I'm gonna ask a few questions in this really quick. There's a few, uh, I just want to say thank you for making the movie. I've seen the movie twice. Thank you for showing it. I'm all about transformational media and the importance, and the importance of messages and, you know, impactful films. I think it really has something to do with how we shape society. That being said, there's a few red flags that popped up for me. I'm just not so secure about an entity outside of my city coming to do ninety-eight percent of the work without being on the ground. I don't think you, I haven't heard the test marketing or the information that you receive from the community. And I'm wondering, what are the three main factors that would make you come to a community, isolated community and look to invest as much as you are and act so much? Uh, I did hear the travels, coming back and forth. I appreciate you being here. Um, another red flag is not allowing a local nonprofit to be a partner. And, um, I think that regardless of what advice was given from the state level, I think those are things that are practical here on the ground. And again, it's a feel-good movie. Um, I'm, I'm really concerned about if you, I, I'm listening for practical um, policy or some things that have been materialized. Um, and, and then my last, well, it's not my last, I, I I'm wondering why it's arbitrary, why two thousand books, not seven hundred books, not three hundred books? Um, so I don't know who made the decision just to, you know, put some of these numbers down. That's a, that's a pretty big sample, um, to be only the second time being on the ground this deep. Um, I think it should be a lighter scale venture, in my opinion. And lastly, I would say, I'm not saying it's not there. I know a lot of professionals, um, from lawyers, judges, doctors and police have seen the video and seen the movie and read the book. I just want to know, how does that materialize to the police officers who, which is the reason for this group saying they come into communities? I know they go shopping with people. These are great programs and it seemed like it's a lot of multifaceted programs that someone outside of our city will be running. At ninety-eight percent, that's just too big for me. That gives too much control to entities, I believe, outside the city. And I was just, the last thing I'm gonna say, um, is Mayor, I think you're kind of close to this project and I want to know, uh, I, I know you've been working with this project for some time. Um, I do think it's been hurried, just like the other earmarks, like you mentioned, I do think there are some holes missing. And I do think with the red flags, I think it's a great idea. If it came back with a little more meat, I would find myself more ample to support it. Um, I thank you so much for coming and presenting tonight. I asked a lot, so, um, the three factors that makes a group like this choose a community like ours, is it based on crime statistics, police statistics, is it based on location? Um, what are the practical policies that have been developed and how does the police and law enforcement, besides having bleeding hearts and hugging each other? Cause I do think love is the answer, but I think pla- practical policy is the question and that's always in question. So I think these are amazing, amazing programs. Um, I do think, uh, I would like to see it as in test pilots in different areas before we're, we're looking to ask something so big of our state rep to, with so much ambiguity. So, um, I appreciate it again. Um, I thank you so much for my time.
I'll address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. I'll, I'll address part of that and then turn it over. The reason why we want to select Ypsilanti is because of the work that's already been done in Ypsilanti. Uh, it's, it's apparent that the community is responding to the programming. And, uh, you know, it didn't, we, we didn't look around the country to say, okay, what three or four communities can we, can we target for this? It has been organic. It, it has been because of the, the work that already has been put in since the end of twenty seventeen. And continuing through the pandemic, when many programs shut down, we kept going. And, uh, you know, so Ypsilanti, why Ypsilanti? Uh, because it's, it's time. It has shown that, uh, it has responded. The young people of Ypsilanti are responding, they're excited about it. You know, as far as us coming in and doing ninety-eight percent of the work, coming in from the outside, I respect that. I respect what you said, uh, but the ninety-eight percent I'm talking about is, is training people to become leaders using these love is the answer principles. And so someone's got to do the training and we're the folks with the expertise. Uh, we want to build into the lives of people there so that, you know, uh, they can live these love-based principles. You know, to learn about people in the community, to, to open our hearts to them, to volunteer ourselves, to be part of the solution and to empower others to do the same. And so, uh, I see a cat in the background. I'm a cat lover myself. I got, I got two running around here somewhere. And I, I care for them. I love them. I, I, I give them treats. I, I safeguard them. I make sure they have a, a safe home to live in. They know that they are loved. And, and, and that's what we do with our work. You know, we, we have a saying that, um, uh, we, we use this term called Ohana, which is family in Hawaii. And it's not just my blood brother, my blood uncle, it's, it's the people in my community, the people that I've come in contact with. And like I told the young people at Educate Youth, um, now that we've met, I'm your uncle. I'm not some guy living in Henderson, Nevada, I'm Uncle AJ. And if you ever need anything, I'm there for you. And I mean that. And so, you know, our thing is, the work has already been done to an extent there, you know, the surface level work. We just want to go deeper, you know, and I really don't think it's asking Congresswoman Dingle for a favor. Because this money is going to be given out to somebody, somewhere. This money is going to be spent, right? And so we're looking for pioneers, we're looking for leaders, we're looking for people that want to make their communities better. And I know that is all of you. Otherwise, you wouldn't be doing what you're doing, right? So we have identified a few places that we've already been working in. And those are the places that we're saying, we want to go deeper with you, we want to train your people. That's why there's, there's money in this budget to train people to become facilitators and leaders so that they can pick up the ball and, and run with it, uh, with our, with our support. And, uh, last thing I'll say, and I'll turn it over to Nat, is I, I think he's been, uh, named an honorary Ypsilanti resident, if I'm not mistaken. He's been there so many times and has built such great relationships. And so, um, the reason why I'm so excited about Ypsilanti um, is, you know, not because of the one time I, I was there, uh, came in specifically to, to support. But the many, many stories that I've heard from the relationships that have, that have been building. And, um, you know, I just, I just think, um, it'd be a shame to, 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 to let this opportunity go. I wish we had had weeks of time to, uh, to get this to you. I really do. But we weren't even aware of this program until a, a couple of weeks ago. And, and we, we put in, uh, the work right away to try to secure some funding uh, for communities that we've already built relationships with, so that we could help them, uh, to go deeper with these love-based principles.
And very quickly, Anthony, what I want to e- echo what AJ is saying, what we've done up there is, one, we've established a council of elders. And when we look at the council of elders, those are people who are there on the ground, as you said, people that I've met, developed relationships with. We've shared this film with probably at least ten faith-based churches up there. We've shared it also with the covenant of pastors up there, so Pastor Waddles, um, uh.
The highest level law enforcement on the council of elders?
Right now, we don't have a, a law enforcement person on the council right now, but we have a strong relationship with Tony DeGusi. I mean, I, Tony and I developed that relationship there, so when we do have our council of elders meeting, Tony is right there. So we've got the chief. And the other piece that we've got too, that the council, we've got a MOU also with Educate Youth. And Gail was on here. I've been now, uh, selected as a board member of Educate Youth. So yeah, I'm afar, but I'm still there, connected to that. So again, it's the time, the relationships, and I understand what you're saying. That's our role in there to build those relationships, so we have those people on the ground. So I at least know the people, Caroline Sanders, for an example, at EMU. We've met also, I've got a relationship with Dr. Elena Ross. And those people there at the Ypsilanti Community School. So when we start looking at what you said, people who are connected with the community, I would say basically, I'm, I've been AJ's field rep to go in there and establish those relationships at Park Ridge, at Second Baptist Church, at Macy, rest in peace, um, Lois's sister there, uh, Victoria James, you know, those people that I've established those relationships with that can be part of our team to train and then have them also identify other people in the community that we can accomplish those objectives. It's not going to happen overnight. I agree with you, but it's going to be a process to get us there.
Do you show this film and, uh, yeah, okay, I, I digress. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, I want to say thank you. Yes, AJ?
Can I add one more quick thing? It'll take thirty seconds.
Okay.
Thank you. So Congressman, uh, the late Congressman Elijah Cummings was a dear friend and a strong supporter of our program. In fact, he, he showed our film at the Congressional Black Caucus in Washington DC. He and Congresswoman Dingle were close. And Congressman Elijah Cummings' dream, I've got it on video, he shared it with all four hundred and fifty people in that screening, uh, in DC. He said that everyone needs to see this. We need to start, stop talking past each other and start talking to each other. And, and he, he, his feeling was that everyone in America need to be trained on love, love-based living and love-based policing. And I, I know that this is something that, um, the Congresswoman will be excited about. Um, because, not only because of her friendship with, uh, the late Congressman Cummings, but because the, the work that has been done already has laid a foundation for something really, really special in Ypsilanti. And if we do this, the entire country will be looking at Ypsilanti as a model of what to do. Um, so I, I just humbly ask that you consider, uh, this, it's teed up, it's ready to go. And, uh, it will, it will, it will make, um, it will make a lot of people, uh, happy and, and build into the community in, in ways that we can't even imagine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I know that we are well past our, um, time for the presentation, but I think the discussion that we had um, was, was necessary. And, um, I'm not exactly sure where we, uh, we go with this. I do know that, um, the deadline for submitting this, uh, proposal is, um, on Friday. And, uh, we asked, I asked them to come tonight for the presentation because this was a meeting that, um, this is the last time the council will meet before the deadline. So, um, I don't know, uh, Mister Jones Chance, is that your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I, sorry, I just wanted to say one thing, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, but I think, you know, it was, um, you know, a few minutes ago, I was listening to the Educate Youth kids play basketball, cause my office is in the same parking lot. And I think, you know, as lawmakers struggle to find solutions to make sure that you know, that they have a, a better future, they're going to be looking for some kind of a response. And I imagine that this program is going to be welcomed. It may be a good way to use a favor. You know, the other thing is we're not likely to see more earmark requests because the deadline came so quickly through all of these. This is from a separate pool of funds as the AAA TA funds. Um, and the money is going to be spent regardless. So I really don't see much lost opportunity cost in essentially asking for the ask. Um, I don't, I don't think, uh, Congresswoman Dingle is going to be personally put out. So I, I don't, I don't see the issue there. And I, I do think that as a city, we have to continue to be proactive in this area in particular. Um, and then we have to realize that there might not be a way for us to, you know, policy our way out of it. We're going to have to think about a lot of potential solutions and we're going to have to do things that other people aren't doing in order to make sure that we are not one of these places on the news. Um, I don't, I don't see the harm in this and I was kind of a little bit confused about, um, just the quantity of discussion, I guess. And I, I know I should talk, I'm probably one of the people that asks the most questions. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there. I see the resolution here and, um, I would like to move that we support the resolution.
Is that a motion?
There's no need. Have a motion for this. I'll read the resolution, then you can just vote on the resolution.
All right, thank you.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven five, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the Love is the Answer, Answer Action Group has been working in the city of Ypsilanti for the past three years doing the work of improving police community relations and wishes to expand and deepen their services to reach more people in the community. And whereas as contacts, local governments in the United States spend hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars every year settling police brutality and misconduct lawsuits. The city of Minneapolis, for example, recently settled with the family of George Floyd for twenty-seven. The City of Minneapolis, for example, recently settled with the family of George Floyd for $27 million. Now multiply that by all the other police shootings nationwide that result in local governments settling lawsuits with victims' families. And whereas the objective of this Love is the Answer initiative is as straightforward as it is profound to prevent in Ypsilanti a horrible tragedy like the death of George Floyd by avoiding the needless loss of human life. Ypsilanti will avoid the needless expenditure of taxpayer dollars. Love is the Answer will train Ypsilanti law enforcement to become peace officers practicing love-based policies or policing. And whereas Love is the Answer is, is the quintessential example of an ounce of prevention is worth 100 pounds of cure. And whereas Love is the Answer is a movement to improve police populations, reduce crime and improve public safety and health by teaching people how to love themselves and others. Love is the Answer work began in Ypsilanti in December of 2017, when the City of Ypsilanti became the first city in America to sign a universal lifetime license to use the film Walking While Black, Love is the Answer throughout the community. And whereas a community project funding grant from Congress would be used as follows. $60,000 to buy 2,000 Love is the Answer books and 2,000 mentoring circles. Training that teach participants the basics of how to create and participate in Love is the Answer mentoring circles. These books and trainings will be given to police, teachers, media, ministry leaders, nonprofit leaders, students and other community influencers. The Love is the Answer book, which is a textbook, is a centerpiece of the curriculum. The, in the book, the author AJ Ali shares 25 lessons and offers 25 activities people can do immediately to put Love is the Answer principles into action. Reconciliation experts from across the country share their real-life experiences, lessons they, they've learned, best practices and ways to foster reconciliation in communities. $6,000 for staffing and 20 screening discussions, events featuring a team of Love is the Answer-trained and certified facilitators. $10,000 to train 10 Love is the Answer certified film and book event facilitators in the Ypsilanti area schools and other organizations. $10,000 for one fellowship award given to a grad student who will study and quantify the effects of Love is the Answer in Ypsilanti as well as assist the Ypsilanti Council of Elders with all things Love is the Answer. $10,000 for discretionary Love is the Answer project funding throughout Ypsilanti above and beyond the funds allocated for Love Gardens. These ones would be used for miracles, music, art projects and other Love is the Answer-inspired community projects by the students of Ypsilanti. 20 grants of $500 each will be made available. $1,000 to Strategic Partner National Association of African Americans and Human Resources for their support role in providing HR expertise and other resources to help Ypsilanti organizations with diverse hiring and training based on the Love is the Answer principles. $5,000 for Love is the Answer Garden matching grants. $2,500 for one collegiate scholar award to college students studying racial equity, criminal justice or a similar field. He or she will act as paid intern in support of the mission. $500 for one high school scholar award and the high school student will, with interest in racial equity, criminal justice or similar field, he or she will act as an intern in support of the mission. Whereas Mayor Lois Richardson, Police Chief Tony DeGusi, the Council of Elders, the Educate Youth nonprofit, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, numerous ministries and other Ypsilanti organizations have been heavily involved in Love is the Answer movements, local efforts. Now therefore being resolved that the City Council, the City of Ypsilanti approves and supports the Love is the Answer Community Project Funding Request to the US Congress and agrees to serve as the fiduciary administering body in 2022 with the grants awarded by the US Congress.
So. It's been moved, is there a second?
Did I make the motion?
I thought there were two people.
I made the motion, I believe.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Clerk Kalinga, would you please call the row?
Wait a second. Are we not going to have a discussion?
Okay, if you want more discussion, I didn't realize people still wanted to discuss it, so.
Oh, sorry, I mean, I do. I don't, yeah, I'm sorry, I.
Councilmember Somerville, yeah.
My apologies.
My apologies, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just have a few things to say based on the presentation and some of the feedback we were all provided. You know, I think the general idea here and what the mayor had, you know, talked to me about previous, prior to this meeting is like a pretty good idea. I think we can do this differently, that's more efficient for the needs of our community. You know, $119,000 could be spread and, and put into initiatives, you know, that already exist or into pilot programs that we're working on, like the mental health response within NYPD. I guess I have some like concerns with spending $60,000 on books without knowing how much profit is going to the person who wrote the book and is selling the book to us. You know, we have Park Ridge, Educate Youth, Growing Hope Riverside Art Center that are doing a lot of this work and have grounds, you know, feet on the ground already in our community. This is just a lot of money to be distributing outside of our, like, both our control and like without considering people who are established. You know, when I think of like these, the idea of this garden, that's super cool. But we have, we have Growing Hope, we have Riverside Art Center, we have Park Ridge. We have, you know, student interns that work at Park Ridge. Educate Youth is right across the street from City Hall. And all of these, these spaces need more funding right now because many of them have lost resources that they're used to because of the pandemic. So, um, I don't know, I'm with, prior to seeing all the details, it sounded like a good idea. But I think that, you know, now would be a good time for us to talk about it as a team and maybe make some adjustments to like how to allocate this funding. But I feel like, you know, money could go a lot further if it was being invested into existing programs in our community.
If I may answer that, the existing programs would be, um, would be free to partake of these funds. They would not be excluded. In fact, they would be invited to. The, um, Growing Hope has already been, um, there has been a relationship that has been developed with Growing Hope. And, um, there are already talks, there are already talks about establishing a Love Garden. Well, this would provide the funds for, for that. So it's not excluding anyone that is already up and working. They would all be eligible to partake of these funds.
Yeah, I mean, so like, just like logistically and to be more efficient, like, why aren't we just allocating $15,000 to Growing Hope? Or $15,000 to Riverside Art Center? I mean, and I get that this is like, this whole idea is based around this book. I have some major issues with supporting, like putting my name on something to basically give resources to something that's for profit, without even knowing like how much this organization's going to be profiting. I think it's a good idea. I think that we have a lot of work to do on these issues. But I, you know, like before seeing all the details, it sounded like a good idea. But after seeing the details, I like, I also have questions about all the people listed. Mr. Barr is listed. Is like, he able to speak on that?
Those were, those were proposed. And I, um, when I proposed those to the, um, to the, when I was asked for possible names, I submitted those, I gave them those names. But no, everyone on that list that, it was a proposed list. And I in moving quickly, that list, that whole list should have been removed from, um, from that proposal. It should not have been included in the proposal. It's those names that, um, the letters that receive, that are received would be the names that would be actually, should actually be in there. So that whole list should be deleted from that.
So that list, so you're saying this is not going to be included in the application?
No, it's not.
Okay, I don't know, I.
It should not have been there.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm sorry, you know, to just reiterate, but I don't really feel comfortable with this.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I mean, looking at this, I can see that, um, you know, where we don't know how much profit might be going towards books or whatever. I mean, we know it's not going to be any more than $60,000, right? Um, out of the 119, that's if the books cost $0 to produce. Meanwhile, there is some community benefit. We have 500, 2,500, 5,000. You know, tens of thousands of dollars of grants that can be given out to community here. We don't have time and I, I, I would imagine that there's not a lot of staff bandwidth to come up with an earmark proposal this week to turn it. It's either we, we send the letter, maybe get the money, or we don't. And it, it, I, I don't. I, I'm, I'm a little confused about why we wouldn't do it solely because someone might make money.
Mayor Pro-Tam?
I would like to call the question, please.
All right. Clerk Kalinga? Is there a second to the call the question?
So I'll support that.
Clerk Kalinga, would you call the row, please?
Vote on the question. Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes vote and one absent. On the resolution, Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Brown?
No.
Councilperson Somerville?
No.
With three yes and three no votes, the motion fails.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just would like to say that I certainly agree with Mr. Jones Chance that in not having time to submit anything else, it, um, I think that we missed an opportunity to really bring in some good things for the city. We might, it might not have been all that we wanted, but it would have given us a lot of the things that we actually need. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Austin and thank you to Mr. Ali. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your interest in the city. Thank you for the work that you have done. And I thank you for the work that you will continue to do even without, without our support for the, uh, prop, for the proposal. Yes, Mr. Wilcoxen?
I'm just curious about the earmarking. I, I would like more information about that in terms of, you know, this goes through every congressional cycle and, and every budget year? So this is possible to refine this, um, answer all the questions and come back with this at another time, right?
Well, I don't actually know how often the earmarks, um, are presented. I know that this one is for the year '22, so 2022. Uh, I don't know if they're every, uh, every year. But I do, I did understand, was, uh, got an understanding that this, that the earmarks are taking the place of the pork that used to be added to other, uh, other bills. And this was the way around that, so.
John.
And I, I, I do believe that we missed a, a good opportunity. I think that some of the things that, um, there were questions about, I think that they could have been worked out and worked on once the, um, once we had, if we were, received the, the grant. So I think that there were things that could have been, um, done to make it even more of what we want, so. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Appreciate your presentation, thank you.
Thank you for your time and we look forward to continuing to serve the youth of Ypsilanti. Have a great evening.
You too, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is resolution motions and discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, the presentations of Department amended budgets. And I will the floor to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the preliminary to our budget sessions that we will be entering into, um, in the month of May. But Council, um, we have a new council member, of course. And in the past, Council, um, would receive a presentation from our department heads, just pretty much given an overview of the work that has been done, the goals and accomplishments that have been, um, realized. And then to give you just, um, a brief snapshot of the things that you'll see in the actual budget, meaning things that, line items that may have increased. And they'll provide you with detailed information of maybe why, or line items that maybe have decreased and revenues that have decreased. So it's an opportunity for you to hear from our department heads. And I think that's a great opportunity for them to tell their story to you. I imagine that during budget time, you will have questions, but this gives you a chance to see what they've done and what they may be proposing for the next budget years.
Excuse me, city manager? Like the first part, does this part have a lot of time to it or is it just until it's done?
Until it's done, hopefully it won't take long.
Cool, I'm here for it.
It's just informational based, basically, we're not expecting Council to, um, you know, approve anything on tonight. If you have any suggestions or maybe things that could have been added or that you'd like to see that was not a part of the goals and the department heads have not mentioned, you can feel free to do that. And those are things that I will work with the fiscal director about and the department director about. If there's something different or something additional that has not been stated already. So we're going to jump this presentation off with our police department. And I'm not going to introduce everyone. So I'm expecting that we'll just roll right through and that the city clerk will, uh, tell the next person that is their turn. So we'll start with our chief. Tony, take it away.
Yeah, I'll share my screen now.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure again to come to you with our budget, um, presentation this year. And as the manager said, I will try and be as brief as I can with what we've got going on, the things that we've accomplished. I'll give you a little snapshot of what the police department looks like right now, um, where we'd like to go. And that said, I'll jump right into it. Get the next slide, please, Andrew.
Give me one, I gotta switch something around here.
Okay. Do you, do you have to move it or can I move it or?
I'll, I'll move it. I just gotta share the right screen.
So there be no good joke while we're waiting? Okay. Are, are you ready, Andrew?
Is everybody seeing the chief's presentation?
I, I can see it.
Yes.
Yep.
Can you go on to the next, next slide? Can you go on to the next, next slide? Or can I? Oh, I guess I can do it, right? Okay, uh, so this is, uh, an organizational chart of, uh, what the police department is going to look like. Uh, it coincides with the community policing, uh, plan that we came with, um, some several months ago. And I'll talk more about where we're at with that, uh, later on in the presentation. Um, but you can see that we've narrowed some of the patrol division to put it in other places, including, uh, our community area policing crime reduction unit. Um, and there's a small caveat at the bottom, not reflected in the, in the budget numbers that you have, but hopefully, uh, the council will decide to, uh, fund two extra police officers, uh, to what you see here on the chart, uh, to work, uh, one on A side and one on B side. You know, what we call a three-to-three overlap shift, um, that would represent the most, uh, the times that we've had most activity. Uh, and that would increase our presence, reducing, uh, occurrences of overtime, especially during vacation seasons. Uh, so we'd like to try and maybe support, uh, re-support the patrol division a little bit. The council and department goals, two-year goals that we set last year, uh, one was a stabilize, stabilization of personnel. So that's been accomplished. Uh, actually, we are, we do have one vacancy. When I made the slide, we were fully staffed. Uh, but unfortunately, over the weekend, uh, probationary police officer decided policing was not for her and resigned her position. So we'll be looking, uh, for that one, that one more to fill, uh, to full occupancy. In association, Chiefs Police One Mine Campaign, the mental health initiative was accomplished. Uh, the ICP awarded the YPD, uh, its recognition, uh, back in August. MAC, MACP accreditation, uh, this schedule will be accomplished by ju, uh, end of June of this year. Uh, it's an ongoing process. Uh, the replacement of the AFIS machine, the, uh, fingerprint, uh, system that we, uh, was antiquated has been installed as operational since February. The returning community policing is indicated, uh, the chart that you saw before, the organizational chart is where we want to get to. We have actually increased the personnel in the detective bureau and they're being trained as soon as their level of experience is acceptable to, um, to be fully operational on their own. Uh, we'll be adding the, uh, capture unit, which you can see in the far right of the, uh, organizational chart. That's estimated, uh, hopefully in late spring, early summer of this year. Uh, mental health response team, that's also work in progress. Uh, we continue to work with, um, Tricia Cortez and community mental health and, uh, co-responding. We're constantly talking about what we should and shouldn't be doing. Uh, they're very supportive of not sending social workers out on their own and having a co-response with law enforcement. So we're trying to work out some of those issues, uh, and how we get that accomplished on an ongoing basis. Uh, prescribed, uh, procedural justice training. So what we accomplished in twenty-twenty, uh, is that we had, uh, police ethics, implicit bias, current and partial policing and de-escalation training accomplished for the entire department. Uh, coming up for this year, uh, emotional intelligence, cultural competency and viewing and discussion of the movie Walking While Black, which you just had a very long discussion about, uh, that's going to be shown and discussed, uh, department-wide this year. Uh, so an additional goal, something that wasn't talked about, um, but it's something that has come to our attention and, and great need, especially this past year with all the pressures on, uh, people being quarantined and the pandemic and whatnot and all the stresses along with the normal stresses of the job, we want to try and, and develop an officer wellness program. And that's going to basically have three elements to it. One is going to be an annual mental health checkup with a police psychologist. That's going to be quasi voluntary. Uh, we're going to schedule the sessions. We're not requiring people to actually say anything when they go there. It's an opportunity for them to share with this police psychologist, uh, anything that might be bothering them, um, just kind of a, just a mental health checkup, exactly what, what I said. Uh, the second is going to be, uh, engaging a dietitian to discuss individual diet plans, uh, basic goals for weight loss, muscle increase. With shift work and the way police officers, uh, work, we have a very, very, uh, long history of poor diet and, uh, not, not doing very well in, in fitness areas. So that's one of the things we want to engage as well as a voluntary fitness testing, uh, with incentives for passing. And that's kind of, um, a thing that we're looking at. Maybe it's time off, perhaps it's a small bonus, uh, in a separate check. Um, and of course, the requirements will be, uh, reachable, practical and based on gender and age, uh, norming similar to what they do, uh, in the military. Uh, so this, that's going to cost a few dollars, but the funding for the annual mental health checkups, uh, is going to be addressed by, uh, Ms. Jones from the HR department, because that's generally where those, uh, funds come from. Uh, and at the police department requesting funding to replace worn-out and outdated gym equipment. The last time any equipment was changed out in the gym in the basement was two thousand and one. So there's some things that are unusable, uh, on the port line of dangerous. And it's estimated that, uh, about nine thousand dollars is needed to do the updates. As far as capital items, we have one, uh, it's a carryover from the two-year budget. The body worn cameras, um, are, are really doing a fantastic job. Uh, the in-car cameras, not so much. And they come from two different places, which causes us to have a disconnect between the two systems. So, uh, not only that, we're talking about, um, we're talking about some situations in which, uh, sometimes the cameras aren't working at all, uh, they're not supported by the vendor. So, uh, our move is going to be to go with Axon, um, body cams as well as now supplement that with the in-car cameras from the same company. It'll give us the functionality of the same back office system, uh, so we get our FOIA request and whatnot. It's be much, much less tasking on people to take care of those issues. Uh, and that is, uh, approximately fifty thousand dollars from their quote. Uh, fortunately, they can spread that out over a five-year period, um, and that includes all the, the storage for video and whatnot. So that's a, that's actually a pretty good, pretty good deal for us. And last but not least, the motor pool, uh, we're scheduled for two patrol car vehicles to be replaced. Uh, so those would be as, as consistent with our fleet, two Ford SUV police interceptors uh, at the tune of, uh, possibly ninety thousand dollars for the vehicles and the change out of equipment. And with that, I promise to be speedy, uh, take any questions.
Uh, I got this one question, chief.
Okay.
Pardon my, uh, face absence. The only question I got is, um, I rarely see, um, budgeting for arsenal, like for weaponry, like vests, like, uh, new guns, like, uh, shotguns and different things. Do you guys have a budget already attributed that, that you can constantly go to for, uh, upgraded arsenals?
So generally, that comes out of, uh, what we call our materials and supplies line item. Uh, so there isn't something specific that says, uh, firearms. And, uh, with regards to that, when we make those kinds of purchases, normally they're department-wide purchases, so they'd fall into, uh, a capital expense. So it would be that kind of money. Um, but it, in addition to that, some, some of the ways that we update things is we trade in older things, uh, to, uh, firearms manufacturers for newer models. Uh, sometimes it's kind of a two-for-one, two-used rifles for a new rifle, uh, so we can actually, you know, gain some, um, some value from the, the old equipment. Anything else from anyone? Okay, that was easy.
Council, the next presentation is, uh, from Chief Habs.
Andrew, are you controlling the screen?
I am, yes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm all set. Uh, what you have here is the organizational chart for the fire department. Uh, just pretty laid it out, uh, in administration. You have the fire chief, fire prevention, which is the fire marshal administration. We have our executive assistant, and then everyone else falls under fire suppression. But three captains, three lieutenants and five firefighters per ship. Total twenty-one first, uh, twenty-one in suppression until the twenty-four person of the fire service, fire department. Uh, fire administration, fire marshal Pope, uh, Cliff Pope was promoted to fire marshal, uh, June of last year. He's, uh, continued to, uh, obtain his certifications. He has his firefighter two certificate, fire inspector two certification. He has this plan review certification, uh, there was a mistake made through the class, so he has to certify in inspector one. He kind of got, they kind of got those backwards. He'll do that Friday, then he will have all the certifications required to, uh, fill the position of fire marshal. So, uh, he has been working closely with it's like township fire marshal, uh, so that when he does get his certifications, uh, you know, he's prepared and ready. So he's been doing a lot of work on his own. He's been going out with them, doing arson investigations and doing inspections. Uh, even at a time when, when we weren't doing inspections, he's able to, to, uh, get that knowledge and be prepared. Uh, the executive assistant, uh, Simone was previously the executive secretary. We were able to reclassify her to executive assistant, and this was based on, um, the job and, and the duties and responsibility that she does and helps me in my daily operations. That more reflects the executive assistant, more reflects what she, uh, what her job title is, what she does for me. Uh, next part we got here is grants. Uh, obviously, you know, we have the Safer Grant, and, uh, that's going to expire in, uh, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, total amount for the three-year period was, uh, one million eighty-two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, the federal share was six hundred and sixty-seven thousand four twenty-nine. The federal share requested so far is two hundred and seventy thousand five seventy-nine. Uh, the amount you pay is two fifty, I believe. I, I saw today that amount. The last payment has actually been paid. Um, so, uh, the last pending went at twenty thousand, and then there's a balance of four hundred and sixteen thousand, uh, that we can still recoup from that. Uh, AFG grants, uh, we applied for and received, uh, extrication grant for thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The city share that was, uh, twelve hundred and seven dollars. A thermal imaging camera, uh, the cost of eleven thousand five hundred. The city share, uh, one thousand forty-five. The exhaust capture system, uh, which we are in the last phase of completing. No, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. That was completed at sixty-three thousand two oh seven with a city share of, of the sixty-three hundred and twenty dollars. We have applied for, received, uh, an EMS grant, uh, PHTLS is pre, a hospital trauma life support. Everyone has to be certified in that yearly, uh, that's, uh, costs to, uh, fifty-four hundred dollars. Uh, Captain Barnabau, who's our EMS coordinator, was able to find funding for that fifty-four hundred dollars. So that's going to be covered through a grant. So we've, uh, so far, we've, um, received grants totaling ninety-three thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. The city share has been eighty-five hundred and seventy-three dollars of that. Uh, and within, uh, so the, the savings to the city of eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. And we have one other pending extrication grant for fifteen thousand dollars, which is not a matching grant. And if we receive that, it'll be the, the whole fifteen thousand. Uh, capital improvements. And, uh, this was presented to Bonnie, and she'll go over that more and Ron will be able to speak more on this later. Basically, uh, in, uh, I just, you know, very categorized that the first one, office building, replaced dormitory furniture, carpeting, flooring, outdated bathroom fixture. Also, I want to add a, a, a window in a dorm during COVID. Um, we, we always had a captain and lieutenant sharing a sleeping space. It's a good quote of, of like, uh, a small kid's, uh, bedroom that's shared by two people. So with COVID, we decided to separate those two, to put the captain in one, uh, living quarters, sleeping quarters and lieutenants in another. So the room that the lieutenants are currently in, uh, at one point was a weight room and one point a storage area, but it's a, a larger space. But there's no windows, um, like put a window in there, uh, bathroom fixtures. If you come here, they, they, we, over the last fifty years, we got things that don't match and faucets that don't max, match. We have one right now. It's got caution tape on it because it doesn't work. So, um, like, uh, start working on those things. The heating and cooling, uh, like I said, Ryan could speak on that under, uh, um, facilities, uh, maintenance. Uh, we've been doing a lot of work on the, on the HVAC system and, uh, we've got an estimate to replace it. So, uh, we'd like to, uh, update that and, um, and that'll be, uh, detailed further in the actual budget presentation. Uh, parking lot, there's, uh, parts of the concretes that are cracked and, and, uh, and they'll, and some are worse than others, some's in pretty bad shape. The drains have had two companies come out, the, and both of them said the same thing, the drains are, are starting to drop. Um, if you come out and see it, they had, they ended up being raised. And so basically, uh, uh, the third one is to repair and reinforce the existing concrete. Not all of it, just slabs of it, because some of the slabs are perfectly good and some are in pretty bad shape. Uh, next one is motor pool and basically just the history of our trucks. Tire one was purchased in two thousand and seven at a purchase cost of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And a lot of council people that have heard this before, um, there's been a few people that may not have, but I think, uh, Mr. Jones Chance is not. I think most of you saw this last time. Uh, engine three was purchased in two thousand and eleven. Purchase price of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Engine one was purchased in two thousand and seventeen, had a purchase price of four hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And just briefly, NFP recommends that after fifteen years, and if they've been properly maintained, that it, uh, truck is, uh, place in reserve status, we don't have the capability to do that. Uh, so that's more, just more on the next slide, next two slides. So, uh, tire one in six years will be twenty years old. So I put this in there so the city can start that to, to, um, plan ahead to replace vehicles as, as they're going to be needed. Engine three in ten years, engine three will be twenty years old. So instead of saying fifteen years, I'm looking at at least a twenty-year cycle. Uh, and then assuming five percent increase in purchase price, the estimated replacement cost of both fire products will be approximately two million dollars. Estimated tire one priced in two thousand and nineteen, uh, if you had, I, I haven't, we haven't priced it up, but if you do five percent, it was nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars projected price of an engine, uh, and I mean in two thousand and twenty-seven. Uh, when it would probably need to be replaced would be anywhere from one point two nine to one point five four million dollars. The estimated engine three price in two thousand and nineteen, when we first did this presentation was, um, five hundred to, uh, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, the projected price in two thousand and thirty-one would be anywhere from eight hundred, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then you have a, uh, what we did as far as the estimate of the, the vehicles a year they were purchased. Um, the potential lifespan and the year to be can discontinue, uh, with the exception of the fire marshals current now, the Ford Escape. It's at six years, but I'm not requesting a vehicle next year. I don't have any, uh, purchased, uh, to, to, any, uh, capital improvements to purchase vehicles next year in multiple. So that just gives you an idea of what we're looking at for a timeframe as to, uh, purchase vehicles. Uh, revenues, we do cost recovery, um, cost recovery is basically money we can recover for accidents and, and different things like that that happen in the city. We don't bill residents, but we're able to bill, uh, people's insurance cover, uh, insurances for, uh, for some fees and we're estimating that cost at ten thousand. Uh, the, uh, public assistance, uh, two eighty-nine grant, uh, from the state, uh, that's, uh, funded at eight hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred dollars. So it's, uh, uh, right now it's a hundred percent funded and it, it looks like it's going to stay that way. Um, and, uh, I'm sure Regal will, will talk about that more later. Uh, the Safer Grant, um, the Safer Grant, it concludes, uh, February twelfth of two thousand and twenty-two. So we're in the last year of the Safer Grant. Uh, some achievements, the city's ISO rating was reviewed. Uh, ISO is, uh, insurance, uh, service operations and, um, they gave the city of Ypsilanti a, uh, a, a three. We were four, we improved up three, and, uh, that has a, a potential monetary savings to homeowners of Ypsilanti that, uh, companies that, that, uh, that I think they all do, partake of the ISO ratings, um, they base their, your, in your homeowners' insurance on, on the rating of your, your city, the ISO rating. And the, the three is actually a pretty, uh, good rating. I say they did forty-two thousand, uh, communities of the forty-two thousand communities. There was roughly thirty-four hundred that received a three-year better, and we're one of those communities. And that's, um, so that's, that's an accomplishment for the fire service. Uh, the way, uh, we're fully staffed for the first time since two thousand and six. We have, uh, with the three, like I said, mentioned earlier, three personnel and administration, twenty-one in suppression. Uh, we did that and we, uh, maintain diversity. And, um, I've always taken pride in the fact that the fire department and the makeup of the fire department, uh, reflect the demographics of the city. And then again, this cost recovery, and I won't go into that one. We have, uh, the county specialty teams. We have, uh, the, the hazmat team, the technical rescue team and, uh, swift water rescue team. And because we're able to, uh, increase staffing, we're able to increase, uh, the number of participants on the specialty team. So now we have, uh, four persons on each team. Uh, we're in, continue to, to increase training with our AMA, our automated mutual aid partners. That's the superior to play township. And, uh, so we do a lot of, uh, we, we're, that's just an increasing training. If you get our CILs, we do a lot of training and we do a lot of cross-training with, uh, the Ypsilanti Township and Superior. The next thing we're going to undertake is probably a training at, uh, Michigan Ladder. Uh, I talked to Tom. I hate to say that he's going out of business with Michigan Ladders, going out of business. Everybody's aware of that probably at this point, and, uh, Tom, who's been very gracious since over the years, is going to allow us to train in his building because we're, we don't really have facilities like that to train. Because we're, we don't really have facilities like that to train in well, you know, while it's on the market before it's actually sold. And the next one kind of ties into the the fitness, the physical fitness and the wellness. Captain Madison, as you're all aware, received the Washington one hundred award for firefighter leader last year. And the monetary award that comes with that was twenty five hundred dollars. And with that twenty five hundred dollars, we're able to purchase a new treadmill. So they can, you know, obviously work on their fitness. We do have a fitness committee and I'd like to maybe get with Chief DeGusi about his optional wellness program. And maybe something we can do jointly between the two departments. Captain proven projects completed, we there was a to replace the the lockers in the bunk in the in the bunk rooms. We did that. We need a gear washer. We've done that. The apparatus, floor and grates. That's almost finished. The last phase of that will be the first week of May. And that will be the resurfacing on the epoxy of the floor. So that project is almost finished. And the exhaust capture system has been completed at this point. Any question? That was a little longer than Tony.
Very good report. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. Chief, those amazing accomplishments, it's just what stood out is this in fifteen years. We have a fully staffed fire department. That's really, really amazing and a testament to your leadership. I appreciate that. And when's the last time we've had a fire marshal here in the city?
Last fire marshal was Chief Tesco. So it's been roughly eleven years.
Okay, cool. So just again, it's been a lot of, not a lot, but it's been a number of spans where we've been able to fill the gaps. And I just think in your tenure, you've been very diligent in that. So I just want to thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
You appreciate it.
She's not willing to anyway. I'm glad you brought up the the sharing of the wellness. You know, I was looking at this and there there were mention of gyms in both facilities. And I know that like firefighters and police officers are like cats and dogs or they want to have a rival where you can go on there. But I'm just wondering if there's other ways that, you know, two departments right next door to each other can can share costs. And I know that, you know, the the contracts are different, different completely organizations. But I just wonder if there's other ways that 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 sharing could be implemented. And don't need an answer, but I just I like that idea. In the motor pool, you know, these trucks are like incredibly expensive.
Yes, they are.
And so when when they're set aside, what happens to these things? Do these go to smaller fire departments that don't have that restriction or is it possible?
They can do that or they can they can be sold outright. But at the end of a at the end of a fire truck's life, there's there's not that value as you as much value as you would think in one. And sometimes we donate it to departments up north, Belfour, which is a large restoration company. They 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 supply departments up north, small departments who don't have the access to or funding for. And the probably the better thing to do with it, because we don't really have the facilities to store a vehicle. In the past, we've we've sold it and basically gotten what you can for it in the open market.
Got it. And is there any way to cannibalize like any of the mechanisms and put it onto a new chassis or?
Technology is always changing. You wouldn't want to do that. They're all fire trucks are all pretty much custom made. They're custom cabs. They're in a and it's a long process to identify what you want, go to the manufacturer. And it's a process that we remember we purchase a vehicle, there's a committee involved. It's at least three people and they start with with basically the the design and the need and it goes out from there. And so there's a whole process to buying a fire truck. It's like a purchase. It's a it is what it is, a twenty twenty five year purchase. A lot of our problems, our trucks are emissions related. And the simplest way to put that is we have a lot of cost of maintenance costs. Because we basically are driving a over the road vehicle for short distances of time. Over the road, those emissions, they burn out with us. They they don't burn out, they accumulate. And last year was was a terrible year for maintenance. We spent almost seventy thousand dollars in maintenance. So so that so those in this year, not so much. And then next year, it looks like it's starting out again because we're starting, we just spent six thousand dollars on maintenance on engine three related to the exhaust system. So the advances and the restrictions in the exhaust is not much. I mean, as far as the equipment, we just we take off the hand tools and things like that and we use all the things over. But the the engine, yeah, that's the there's certain things you can't, you don't want to reuse in a fire truck.
Thanks.
Oh, you're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none.
Council, the next presentation is legal services by the city attorney.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, team. My name is John Barr. I'm the city attorney. Next slide, please. City attorney is a charter office created by the city charter. As a legal officer of the city, we're obligated under the city charter to give legal advice to the mayor, city council, city manager and staff. Our office represents the city in all litigation, administrative hearings. We we monitor litigation as handled by the city insurance. We draft legislation for the city. We prosecute all city ordinance violations, traffic stops, traffic violations, code enforcement, go on. We're charged with labor matters. However, the city historically has hired separate labor council, which I think is a good idea. Our mission is to provide quality legal services to the city of Uppsany in an ethical, thoughtful, timely and cost effective manner. We provide legal support for the city council, city manager and staff. We have, we are out house attorneys for the city and we have a contract with the city. Part of that contract is we do not get involved in any political campaigns or issues within the city. And our advice given to the city is limited to legal matters. Next slide, please. Chart for the city attorney, it's a pretty small chart. You can see I am the city attorney. We have assistant city attorneys of Jesse O'Jack, who's been a longtime assistant and does most of our prosecution. Carl Barr is an assistant city attorney. On the administrative staff, we have Jennifer Merritt, who's our office manager, legal secretary. And also as the deputy Freedom of Information Act coordinator. I serve as the coordinator for the Freedom of Information. Then we also have Ashley Roberts and Elizabeth Taylor. And not shown on the chart, we occasionally have additional staff of law clerks or paralegals. At the present time, we have a paralegal, Tim McMackin, who's pretty much on sick leave right now, not for himself, but his wife is not feeling well. Next slide, please. The budget for the city attorney has been pretty constant for the past few years. The city prosecution and the general legal work is two hundred and two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. And that's what we're asking for again, that's fixed. And every month you should get a report from this office detailing in quite detail what we do and what it, what the time is and what the eventual cost is. And every month, for most months, we spend more time on the contract than the contract allows for payment. The second part of our contract is litigation. And this is something that's a guesstimate because we don't know for sure. But my guesstimate is eighty thousand dollars, which is pretty much what we've averaged over the past few years. Should be adequate to have that for the situation where the city is sued. Or sometimes when we have to take action in circuit court in different items. Next slide, please. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Attorney Barr.
Yes, sir.
Let's have one small question. You have been diligently serving the city for over three decades, if I'm not mistaken. And we want you, yeah, and I'm sure we want you here for another decade. But but if you do, I mean, because I'm sure you presented these thirty years, you've presented budgets. So do you, this is, I'm not at all excited for your succession, but do you have a succession plan? Like he was talking about the trucks moving on and cars and motor pool. Do you have a vision for how long you're going to be representing us?
Well, for the next few years, council member Morgan, and I can tell you that with with the budget, as I've said, we've held constant for the past few years. I live in the city. I love the city. But that budget is pretty bare bones and I expect in the next few years, you may see some budget increases. But I'm I'm looking for probably at least two or three years and I'm working on a succession plan. Of course, Jesse O'Jack is an excellent attorney. Carl Barr is there. And we're thinking about perhaps bringing someone else on board. But that's going to be a question for the city. You know, nothing lasts forever.
Thank you so much, Mr. Barry. You served the city of Uppsany with integrity for, again, decades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, I'm the next one up. So on our first slide, I listed our twenty twenty one fiscal year accomplishments. We were able to accomplish most of the goals that we created, not this justice pass goal session, but the one prior. The only two that we didn't meet were as a result of COVID. So we we are live streaming, but not in the manner that I I had hoped to. And also, I still, I I was getting your packets the Monday, two Mondays before the meeting, but that kind of had a wrench on it because of COVID, but we did successfully administer a twenty twenty election cycle. We acquired a grant to assist in funding this past general election. All outstanding liens for HB were applied to the winter tax bill. We transitioned all public meetings to virtual using the Zoom platform. And then we have transitioned all of our public bodies to the iCompass legislative management software. The first budget that the clerk department manages is the city council budget. Just highlighting some changes. Two years ago, five thousand dollars was added to the seven two eight dash zero zero line item for boards and commissions. Since then, that money has gone largely unused. So I'm proposing to decrease that to three thousand dollars. Another that another thing that comes out of that same line item is events for goal setting facilitation, food, things like that. I also am proposing to decrease that from five thousand to three thousand. So that would take four thousand of that line item that is currently budgeted at eleven thousand. There was discussion during this past goal setting on salary increases for city council. And by charter, council can only have an increase in salary if it's voted upon. So that's something to keep in mind as we enter into the budget, you know, during the the May meetings. Also during goal setting, there was five council members supported administrative support for council. In order to budget to to pay those interns, we we need a little bit more information. Is it going to be one intern for all of council? Will this be one for each council member? Or is it going to be like a three for a pool? And then also to work with HR to develop what skills we're really looking for these individuals to have. Another item that I haven't included in the budget yet, but there has been discussion regarding membership to the National League of Cities. Some years ago, in leaner times, city council voted to discontinue its membership. But if council wishes to, you know, again, become a member of that organization, the cost for the city annually will be one thousand five hundred sixty three. In the bottom here, you can see that the original and amended, that's for expenditures. So you can see that the amount, the four thousand removed from each budget year. For the city clerk budget, the deputy clerk salary will completely come out of this budget now. Historically, fifty percent has been paid out of the clerk budget and fifty percent out of the voter registration. Just for ease in accounting and for payroll, we're moving that all to one one budget. Our contractual services, I'm going to be codifying the 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 code of ordinance each year now. I don't expect it to be nine thousand dollars and it'll probably be potentially around six thousand a year, depending on how many ordinances are approved. But I'd like to keep up on that every year, just so, you know, it's it's a little bit easier to search. If we wait longer than a year than that a year, it does end to tend to pile up. And then it makes it difficult to navigate around the code of ordinances on MuniCode. ICompass, the nine thousand nine hundred dollars per our contract we pay per year. The solid circle software did come out of the clerk budget, but I have moved that into the HB contractual services budget. There is an increase in the revenue from the application fee from marijuana facilities. I originally budgeted sixty thousand dollars, but it will be more upwards from a hundred thousand. And then you can see the original amended budgets there. Going into voter registration, there's currently no elections scheduled for two thousand and twenty one. The deadline to file petitions for the August election is April twenty seventh. Any ballot proposals would need to be approved by May eleventh. But currently, there's nothing scheduled. No murmurs from the county about anything coming from the school district. So it doesn't appear, at least at that moment, that we'll need any money in in that account. But if we do, I would I request a budget allocation for that. Already touched on fifty percent of the deputy clerk coming out of the clerk budget now. I also wanted to discuss what elections are going to look like moving forward. As a result of the no reason absentee, our permanent absentee list balloon from six hundred and forty eight to five thousand eighty seven during this past election cycle. And this kind of illustrated here, if you look at that green rectangle, that is where right when the change was made. And then there's a steady increase until this past election, then you can see how much that has increased. The, just to give you an idea, typically in a general election in years past, just the payroll for for election inspectors would be around thirteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand dollars. This year, it was nearly thirty thousand dollars just for the extra staff that we needed to process absentee ballots. Plus, you're looking at more envelopes needing to be purchased, more postage. So it's going to be in the past, general elections cost maybe around twenty thousand dollars, but now it it's it's going to be significantly more.
Okay, Andrew, could you, what were the, I was trying to read the
Oh, yes.
The lines where the the light blue are the the absentee.
Apps being returned, the dark blue is date sent, so the date that the the ballot was sent. And then the yellow is date returned. So in September here, per per state law, we have to have all ballots out forty days prior to the election for applications that we received. With that big, big line there.
Right.
Getting them all back in October mostly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For the administrative hearings bureau, I originally forecasted revenues at seventy five thousand dollars. But there will be a slight increase to that around seventy nine thousand. And then I already mentioned that the solid circle case management software is has been moved to this budget from clerk. For city insurance, it's recommended to increase general liability by five percent each year. So I did that plus a little extra because there was an increase more than five percent last year. And I just want to make sure those funds are in the budget. The post renewal dividend from two thousand and twenty one was twenty three thousand three hundred and eleven. In this fiscal year, claims reported were seven pool claims. Total incurred was two hundred thousand five hundred and forty eight eighty. In the expenditures there, you can see there was a large increase in what was originally budgeted. The errors and emissions liability saw a drastic increase. So that's why that that occurred there. And similar, we're we're forecasting And similar, we're forecasting for a similar errors and omissions for 2122. And that is all I have. Open up for questions or comments. All right, if there are no questions or comments, we'll move on to Reagan.
Good evening, counsel and mayor, and good evening, everyone. So I will be presenting on the budget for finance, treasury and assessing. So first, I'll share to you our accomplishments. So 102 of our 226 regular vendors have now enrolled in electronic payment system. So this now saves us on issuing checks. And also, it's, it lessened the risk of those fraudulent checks. Also, it made our reconciliation, account reconciliation easier. So also, new vendors are advised to enroll with our electronic payment system. We've also installed office cubicles in the accounting and treasury office. So this helps with our employees' privacy as well as with social distancing. So now we also have 70% paperless workflow. So we now process our accounts payable transactions electronically. So we do this now by having our department heads and our city manager approve invoices through e-signatures. Also, for cash collections, they're now scanning them. And we no longer have to store them at Iron Mountain, so this saves us on our storage cost. Also, we have received our June 30, 2019 GFOA Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Award. And a couple of weeks ago, we did receive our 2020 GFOA budget award. Thank you. So our staff is, so we are truly the finance director and treasurer. And under, under, under this, we have our finance, treasury and assessing. So under finance, we have an accountant, a finance journalist and a part-time finance journalist. Under treasury, we have an accountant, a finance/clerk generalist. And under assessing, we have our contract assessor currently being provided by WCA. For our budget, the total budget for finance, treasury and assessing is 718,000. And 59% of that, or 427,000, is for the salaries and benefits of our employees. 15% of that is for contractual service, which mostly pays for that, for the assessing contract. And the others are for our operating expenses, which is around 26%. With regards to our major expenditures, so we are requesting for fiscal year 2122, an upgrade of our chart of accounts, which is 20,000. This will be in compliance with the requirements of the state. And also, we are requesting $25,000 per year for the computer upgrade citywide. So what we're planning is we've divided this into four parts. Just so after the fourth year, we'll be able to replace all our computers every four years. And that is, that is it for us. If you have any questions, just let us know.
Can you address the contractual obligations and what that goes towards? I'm sorry, miss.
Yeah, yeah. So the contractual services for, in payment for the WCA assessing. So they are not our employees, so we pay them on a, based on contract.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
The employees are with that contract?
For WCA, so we have, yeah, yes, it comes from that, from that account, from that expenditure account.
No, I said, no, how many employees are with the assessing contract?
So we have one, but usually there are times that when she needs help. And since we are under contract with WCA, they also provide help, which is part of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So there are no more questions for Reagan. We can move on to the next one. Yes. Joe Myers.
Good evening, counsel. Move to the next slide, please. This is the flowchart of the community and economic development department. Obviously, we have the building, planning, community economic development, as well as code enforcement, all under one umbrella. Under next year's proposed budget, next slide. We've requested a couple of changes. One, to increase the part-time secretary to a full-time secretary in the building department. The main reason for this is customer service, as well as ensuring that all of our billing and accounting happens properly. We've kind of had it fractional out to many different departments. And that's been a complaint. We have started taking payments. And we also would like to open up for lunch, which we found that a lot of people come to City Hall to pull building permits on their lunch permits, especially when they're doing homeowner occupied projects. And we just can't be open at that time based on our current schedule. So that's the main budget adjustment that we're requesting. We're also asking for some new office furniture, as well as additional training. And then the big thing that council asked for in their, with the housing plan, was $25,000 in contractual services to do a community survey. This would be for housing and other things that council decided what they wanted to get the input of residents. We are also requesting an increase in software and hardware to implement a BSN tablet software. So our rental inspectors can be more efficient as well as code enforcement. Next slide. We are working on many current projects. The Rutherford Pool is actually complete. We're really excited, excited for that to open up this year. Socially distance, obviously. The master plan is getting comments. Our staff has done a really good job at trying to get the input of the community, are really pushing it out on social media. We do have now the Park Ridge Park Playground, which is, in my opinion, one of the nicest in the county. We've worked a lot on COVID relief and really trying to get supplies out to our residents. We've been, and we're almost completed with the sidewalk inventory. And then also working on the code enforcement garden permits that you guys requested back in the, around Christmas. Future projects we're working on is Water Street. Obviously, y'all know about that. We should be hearing something in the next few weeks from the developer. 220 North Park is going to be rolling out pretty soon, a community survey if you guys choose to fund it. Getting caught back up with rental inspections back at the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, we were completely caught up. Obviously, COVID took that down, but now that all of our building department is fully vaccinated, we feel comfortable that we can actually begin slowly, at least doing single-family duplex rental inspections and getting that back on. We have never stopped emergency and complaint-based rental inspections, but we have taken a pause at some of the larger complexes. And one of the things I'm super excited about is really working to cross train employees. So if we do have somebody go on a medical leave, we're not just, we're not just under one rental inspector. So that's kind of the, the, the future priorities. One of the things that I didn't put on here that I should have is Iron Mountain. It's been a goal of counsel for many years, and I think I didn't put it on here because Christopher really did the majority of the heavy lifting, but we've reduced our dependency on Iron Mountain by 50%. And we're going to continue to work towards doing that even more. But once again, that Christopher really took that task on and really went, went forward. We're going to work on reducing that even more in the near future. So that's kind of the big, the big picture of counsel and the budget adjustments that we're looking at. Is there any questions?
Seeing no questions for Joe, we'll move on to the DDA. It's Christopher Jacobs.
Hi, good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Good to be with all of you. Hi, and we are going to break this up into two parts. First, I'm going to dive right into the budget, and then we'll go through a quick punch list of accomplishments over the past year. And although the DDA budget sometimes has some big numbers, it's really quite simple. You know, the top three expenses are about $311,000, representing nearly 65% of the total expense budget altogether. And outside of those three, we have six primary budget items. Those are TIF capital improvements, streetscape maintenance, waste management, facade and building rehab grants, special event contribution and holiday lighting and maintenance. Larger budget items are all on the first page here of this PowerPoint. I think it's 64 of 376 in the packet. We do manage each of the budgets independently. So there are three districts, West Cross, Downtown and Depot Town. West Cross, we're looking here on the next slide at a four-year breakdown with expenses, revenues, and then a fund balance running throughout it. You'll see between 2019 and 2020, we took a pretty big dip in fund balance. And that was due to the West Cross Alley Reconstruction Project that was completed last summer, and that was about $150,000 project. Moving on to Depot Town, the story here is really being super fiscally conservative, I would say, and stoking away, socking away rather, you know, tens of thousands of dollars annually. And so their fund balance has grown from a bit over 150,000 all the way to over 250,000 by the end of the next fiscal year. And one of the major reasons for that is because the DDA had taken parking in Depot Town to be its top priority and envisions a need to invest in, you know, providing more parking spaces into the future, whether it be a deck or additional surface parking. That costs a lot of money, and so Depot Town wants to be prepared for when that opportunity comes about. The next slide, we're looking at Downtown. Downtown has the largest revenues of the three districts. You'll see the numbers fluctuate a bit from 2018 through 2020. And that's because we received a number of grants, over 350 in total. Those were sometimes received in a fiscal year and then not spent until the next fiscal year. And so you'll see our numbers for TIF revenue in 1920 were quite high. And then expenses the following year were much higher than revenues, spending those grant dollars received in the prior fiscal year and the following. Otherwise, a stable fund balance here. And then as we look at the accomplishments for the DDA over the past year, sorry, I don't have a slide for that, but I can run through them pretty quickly. Talked about the West Cross Alley Reconstruction Project. There was also the sale of Riverside Arts Center. We provided a number of new building facade and rehab grants to Thomas Rumford and his building here on Michigan Avenue. And then Thistle Holdings property on North Huron. A number of big projects were completed. The Food Co-op completed a $30,000 grant project. 100 West Michigan completed $100,000 grant. 101 got another 100,000. 209 Pearl the Bellflower, they received $100,000 grant. We supported a ton of different events last fiscal year. Ypsilanti Glow first Fridays, the Independent Film Festival of Ypsilanti, 734 Brewery, and then the All Hallows Illumination in Frog Island. We also pivoted during COVID to provide outdoor cafe grants. Those were made to Ziggy's for their outdoor alley, FCL House and all the outdoor seating on the street. Tower Inn had some outdoor cafe. Sweetwater's made improvements to theirs. In Quentra Latino had an outdoor cafe for the first time. Red Rock Barbecue had a really nice setup in the rear of their building. And then the back office studio pop-up market. We also provided a number of music grants to help program the streets. In Downtown, we provided a grant to Ziggy's and the FCL House, who provided music for Downtown for the whole summer. And then in Depot Town, the Depot Town CDC. There was a redevelopment liquor license for 101 West Michigan, and we held three drive-in events in each of the districts, one per district. This year, we're planning six of those. Holiday lighting, we partnered with the Ypsilanti Downtown Library, did stuff on the West Cross Lamp Holes. Riverside Park was illuminated for a majority of the winter. The Depot Town Tree Lighting Ceremony, which was a little bit different due to COVID, but I thought it was brighter and better than ever. The Water Tower was lit once again this year. We did a survey, provided signage for COVID and a reopening guide for restaurants. We got a $45,000 match on main grant. Of course, all the work with the street closures, we had landscaping improvements and street tree replacements, put in 30 new bike hoops across the district, and the Maple Street Parking Lot IGA. So I ran through quite a bit there. Happy to take any questions.
Well, there's more of a comment. Thank you so much, Mr. Jacobs. That was a long list of accomplishments. It seems like we've been steadily adding to the, to things in the city. So with those six, we're going to do two in each award this time with.
Two in each of the districts, West Cross, Downtown and Depot Town. Yep.
Oh, the districts. Okay, not the awards. Okay. Cool. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
No problem. Yeah, we were really busy this year.
Counsel, there's no more questions. We can move on to the next department, Human Resources, and I'll leave it to Kim Jones.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, counsel. As far as the budget goes, I'm only requesting one amendment for next fiscal year. And as Chief DeJucey mentioned, it's for $6,000 towards the Police Department Mental Health Wellness Program. And I think that's a really good idea that the chief had, and I'm happy to support that. Our accomplishments, even with COVID, we were able to do some virtual training through a company called Truliant. And we offered three trainings for all our employees and counsel. Diversity, Inclusion and Sensitivity, Unconscious Bias and Microaggressions in the Workplace. And then we also offered one to our management staff of creating a positive work environment. Looking forward to COVID being over and being able to do interactive in-person trainings moving forward. Another accomplishment was we were able to move the payroll function under the HR umbrella. We now have a payroll and benefits administrator rather than an HR assistant, which reduces the finance budget by one full-time equivalent. Monica and I are the two members of the HR team, and so I did not prepare a graph for you. Our open enrollment went extremely well. We were able to have that period start earlier than normal. And we also added our retirees to the employee navigator. So I'm excited to have them able to go in and manage their benefits online if they want to. We're moving towards paperless. All payroll reports are now saved online. And we're researching being able to email direct deposit stubs and W2s and that kind of thing, and have people manage their own W4s and address updates, those kinds of things. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet tonight unless anybody has a question.
With going paperless for those reports, is that because you've brought in new software to manage that? Or how's that, how's that functioning?
No, we're just saving them all as PDFs right now, instead of printing them and saving them in full. We should have been doing that. We should have been doing that.
We're unusually quiet tonight.
Also, the next presentation is the City Manager Budget. City Manager McMullen.
All right. You can go to the next slide. So just to begin, I believe everyone knows what my job description is, but my job description as City Manager is to delegate tasks, to oversee projects, to create and manage the budget, to bridge gaps with the community and council, to make sure that city services are carried out, to hire and fire department heads, and basically to represent the city. So having said that, a lot of my accomplishments, some of them may have been done through other departments, but my primary task is to delegate and to see the projects to fruition. So as you see here, the accomplishments for this past year was implementing the diversity and inclusion training. It was offered, and it was completed by city employees and city council. One of our goals that was on council's radar for several years was to migrate away from the Washtenaw County IT Department, and we successfully completed the IT migration with the help of Community Development and Economic Development Departments. Successfully negotiated collective bargaining agreements with IAFF, which was outstanding when I assumed the position, and with our police command. Also, we realized healthcare savings approximately $250,000, and we also offered better health plans to our employees. Next slide. The allocations of funds were consolidated in order to improve Parker Ridge Park. Our economic director did touch on the new play equipment, but we also made a determination to put our funds in one park at a time to realize the improvements. In past years, we kind of spread them around, and people really didn't know what we did. So I spearheaded the concentration of those park improvement funds in Parker Ridge Park for this last fiscal year. Directed implementation of COVID Care Packages Program, which included paper towels, masks, and sanitizer. I believe you probably remember that the efforts of Mayor Pro Tem Brown and Cal Somerville connected the city with Eastern Michigan University, and we were able to successfully garner masks and also get some money from the federal government to prepare these care packages. I didn't put in here, but also council did approve money for barrier busters, which contributed to the furtherance of, I would say, it helped our residents in the 48197 and some 48198 districts. Packages distributed to residents by application. They were distributed to affordable housing partners and units, to our senior housing facilities, and to churches. Successful transition of Freight House, we were able to complete that process, although during, we have faced COVID, so we have not been able to realize the revenue that we thought. But we are hoping that we can recover some of the lost revenue in that venture. Things are looking up, but we did make a successful transition. That was one of council's goals. We oversaw the MDNR grant for completion of Rutherford Pool Bath House renovations. I sat in on quite a few of those meetings, and I should also say that we we successfully completed a governmental agreement to allow Rutherford, I'm sorry, Rutherford Pool to have their own 501, I'm sorry, Senior Center, to have their own 501(c)(3). And that was always a goal, that all of our friends' groups would be able to operate on their own. And so we successfully accomplished that with the Senior Center. Penn Dam Steering Committee, I assigned staff, specifically Christopher Jacobs, working with the Steering Committee. I'm also a part of that. Now, we're trying to contractor for design removal and restoration, and also to spearhead our public engagement process. Supported grant acquisition and community engagement around Penn Dam removal process. Facilitated Water Street Public Engagement Sessions to inform site plan design. Participated in intergovernmental discussions and decisions regarding the upcoming I-94 Pedestrian Bridge Project. Those are meetings with Representative Ronnie Peterson, M.DOT, County Commissioner Ricky Jefferson, Kirk Prophet. We meet very frequently to discuss this project, which is moving forward very quickly. Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for I-94 Pedestrian Bridge was approved for $300,000. We received the Simcock Tap Grant for Hamilton Huron Lane Reduction in the amount of $160,000. Completion of the Border Trail in Frog Island and Grove Road for $800,000. And also received the Washtenaw County Connecting Communities Grant for $15,000 for improvement of trails in Recreation Park. So that is just a few of the projects that were accomplished under my leadership and delegation, and also participation. There's not a lot in my budget at this point. You can go to the next one. That has changed from last year. The permanent wages line item will show an increase for the addition of the Communications Director position, which was a part of the council-approved goals. And Andrew, can you put up the goals? So these are my marching orders. Some of this has been distributed to departmental budgets. But as you know, these are the goals for the city, which are my goals, to improve communication and connection. We are working on refreshing and upgrading the city website. Andrew has acquired a vendor, and I have approved the contract. So we will be proceeding with that. And actually, we're using funds out of this budget for that. Community safety, hire a social worker that is budgeted in the Police Department budget. We have come up already with the job description, and we are looking to create the Mental Health Response Team, which I think is a good thing to apply for in the next grant round. Some funds to assist with that. The chief indicated that he is moving right along with implementing the community policing philosophy and plans to have that rolling by spring of '21, the initial parts, since he does now have the Detective Bureau all set. And so we're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is great. We are working on infrastructure, and you will hear from Ron Akers about the funds that, I don't know if he's going to say it tonight, but you'll see it in the budget funds that have been allocated for the city sidewalks. We'll continue to upgrade our park facilities. And we have our marching orders as far as housing, safety, sustainability, and building. You can read that yourself. And if you can come down, council staff workflow. Actually, I'm looking for a vendor to do a compensation study. I am also considering putting in the budget a raise for city council members, one that is commensurate with what non-union and the collective bargaining units are getting as a cost of living adjustment due to COVID. So that's one thing that we did not discuss, but that I will probably bring to council since we do not have a compensation board or committee that is stated, I believe, in our charter.
Could you move the slide up, the slide up some, please?
Explore regional transit and available grant funding. So we've been throwing this around since there was some earmark funding. And so my charge is to get with surrounding municipalities so that we can make this a regional effort. And so that is, that is the direction that I plan to go. And so it says explore, so that is exactly what I'm doing to see how many other municipalities are willing to to have some stake in the game for us having a rail or some type of regional transit in the city of Ypsilanti, particularly in Depot Town. One of the other things, and it's not on here, but one of my goals is to support downtown businesses. During COVID, they've lost a lot of revenue, and so since we have received some funds from the federal government to make up for losses, I will try to come up with something for council to entertain, maybe grants to downtown businesses to help them to get back on their feet. And I'm going to work with Christopher Jacobs and the DDA. Council staff development, I am working right now currently with the Human Resources Department, and she has put out specifications to EMU for what we would look for in interns for the mayor and city council. So we are working on that. We ran into a little hiccup because there's already a posting out there for the mayor, and we had no idea. So we have to work backwards to get that straightened out, but we are already working on that. We're working on developing a student program, but these are my goals, and I've already, because these are the goals approved by council, and we've already began working on them. And that is the end of my presentation. Are there any questions? All right.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Council, the next presentation is from DPS, and Ron Akers will take over from here.
Good evening, Council. The first thing I want to do is just give a brief overview of DPS responsibilities. I want to highlight some of the progress we made on the goals we identified in the 2020 Goal Setting Report. And then lastly, we're going to overview some budget changes and some proposals that we're going to be proposing for the next fiscal year. So yes, there's a number of responsibilities within the city. We do anything from roads maintenance, where we do road surface maintenance, alley maintenance, parking lots, storm sores, tree maintenance, to parks, where we do grass cutting, park maintenance. We also handle the environmental solid waste aspects of the city. So we provide curbside collection of recycling and yard waste and collection of trash in the downtown area and city parks. We also manage the contract with Stevens, who is our trash contractor. Lastly, one of our other functions is we do fleet management for several departments in the city, and we also do vehicle maintenance for Public Services, City Hall, and our Police Department.
I think you've watched the screen here, Ron.
Andrew got booted. I'm going to start sharing the screen in a second, all right?
All right, thank you. Sorry, Ron.
Don't know, no problem.
Ron, I think you could continue because you weren't going off the slide, were you?
I was about to jump on the slide, so.
I'll be there in one second. There you go, Ron.
All right, thank you. So those are just an overview of some of the responsibilities that we perform at DPS. There are 25 employees who work in DPS, so we are, we have a fairly significant number of employees. So next, I want to take a look at some of our goals and accomplishments that were identified in the Goal Setting Report for 2020. The first one I want to talk about is the goal to continue to upgrade existing parks, facilities, and maintenance. So just to highlight a couple of the things that have been done this year, we replaced the playground equipment at Candy Cane and relocated it to an area that was more central to the park. Playground is accessible via the sidewalk from Roosevelt now, and a lot of the feedback that we've received on the project has been very positive. The Parker Ridge Playground Replacement Project was not a DPS project, but I did want to highlight it. It's been very successful. It's a great park. The, we do have several other projects planned for Parker Ridge that's going to occur this summer. I know City Manager Mullen touched on them, but specifically, some of the items that we're going to be doing are replacing the pavement and doing top pointing work at the pavilion. We're going to be resurfacing and doing fencing repair at the basketball court, as well as installing lights at the pavilion and several other minor maintenance things around the park that's going to improve it and make it look nice. Another project that I wanted to highlight was the Frog Island Border to Border Trail Project and the lighting installation. This was completed by County Parks and Rock, and the trail looks great and gets a ton of use. The parking implementation strategy is going to be touched on more by Project Manager Westler, so I'm going to leave that to her. The crosswalk, one of the other goals was to do the crosswalk at Huron and Pearl at the Riverside Arts Center. We worked with M.DOT to have a gateway treatment project installed. There were delineators that were put in the road at that intersection. Those will be reinstalled here shortly to make sure that that intersection has some measures to help maintain safe. And then one of the other goals was to implement traffic calming and road diet measures. So we've talked a lot about the Huron-Hamilton-Washtenaw Road Diet Project that's continuing. We've talked a little bit about the Huron River Drive Project that's continuing. There's a road diet component to that. And we're also working with the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study to look at some traffic calming solutions on areas of Mansfield, Prospect, East Cross, and Second Avenue. I do want to recognize Project Manager Westler for her work on getting that project off the ground. It's going to be a good project and, you know, go ways in trying to slow traffic down in those areas. Next slide, please. Another goal that was addressed was increased recycling. So the city was awarded a $73,000 Eagle Grant and a $4,000 Washtenaw County Board of Public Works Grant to support public recycling containers in the parks in downtown areas. Look for these this summer. Those are going to be put in. The city is also working with WARMO on a recycling quality improvement project, which will assess the quality of the city's recycling stream. It is going to be providing a direct mailing to those who are eligible for our recycling program, which the mailing is going to show what is recyclable in the city. And ultimately, it's going to provide some baseline data that for the WARMO community's recycling stream. So hopefully, in the long run, it will save us money at the recovery facilities when we take our recycling tour. Repairing city sidewalks to code was a goal. We continued our work on our ramp replacement program, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some funding that we're going to And I'm going to talk a little bit about some funding that we're going to put in next year's budget to help improve some of the sidewalks that the city is responsible for. One of the goals that was discussed was to develop a plan to provide regular maintenance schedules for city facilities. We are continuing that goal in the next budget year. Due to COVID, we tried to limit our time in other facilities around the city. So that way, we didn't have any cross contamination issues. So this is something that we are hoping to achieve next year. Another item which was discussed that I want to highlight is that the Sustainability Commission did complete a draft of the sustainability plan. That sustainability plan is going to be included in the master plan, which is going through the public comment process right now. It is not necessarily DPS project, but I do want to recognize the Sustainability Commission's achievement. Next slide, please. Other accomplishments then, projects that we've done this year, we did a reconstruction of West Cross between Cortland and Wallace, including adding a bike lane on it. We did a resurfacing project on Eek's Cross from River to Prospect. That road looks a lot better than it did before. Some of the other projects that we have upcoming in 2021 and 2022, we're doing a resurfacing on Oakwood between Sherman and Congress. That's going to be a county millage funded project. MDOT is doing a resurfacing on West Cross from here on the Washtenaw. Nope, we lose it again?
He was on a roll too.
So West Cross is going to be doing a resurfacing project as well as YCUA is going to be doing work on West Cross prior to that. So just as a heads up, the tentative schedule for that is YCUA is going to be starting their work on, or on or around June 1st. That's projected to go through to mid-August and then the resurfacing project will come either later in August or early September. In addition, in 2022, we're going to be having the Forest Street Bridge. That's going to be a fairly significant project and a much needed project that needs to be completed. The last accomplishment I wanted to highlight was the city did receive our Tree City designation. Arbor Day Foundation back for 2020 and 2021. So we are eligible for some tree money from the Arbor Day Foundation, which is good. Next slide, please. So I want to highlight some changes to our budget. That is going to be seen by council when the proposal comes through. I'm going to try to do this and go fund by fund. So I'm going to be trying to keep it as brief as I possibly can. For utility street lighting, we currently budget $400,000 per year to cover all of the electricity costs for our streetlights. DTE did initiate a rate increase earlier. This would have been fall 2020. So we are projecting increases in this line item due to the rate increase and due to some of the lights that we have added in Frog Island Park and the parking lot at Frog Island. And some of the lights that we're going to be anticipating adding as part of the I-94 project or I-94 pedestrian project, excuse me. So we are projecting a $15,000 increase for 2021 and then we're going to be projecting a $20,000 increase for 2122. We're going to be monitoring these fees as time and, you know, we'll be able to refine the projections after the rate increase. You know, as future budget years allow. Another change that council will see is we're going to be shifting our sidewalk storm removal operations from the parking fund back to the general fund. We transitioned all of our parking lot maintenance items to the parking fund when that was established last year. And historically, our sidewalk storm removal operations had been a component of our parking maintenance line items. And so what this does is it transitions it back to the general fund because it's, it's not a parking lot expenditure. There is no change in the amount, so there will not be a change in the amount of money, just what fund it's accounted of, accounted in, excuse me. Next slide, please. Another request that's going to be coming before council, that's a change to next year's budget, is regarding park staffing. So based on the feedback that we've received regarding our parks maintenance and our margin maintenance, we've made some staffing and assignment changes and have assessed what our minimum staffing needs really are to make sure that we're completing these responsibilities as well as some of our other road division responsibilities. The result of this is a proposal to add two equipment operators to bolster our current crew. If approved, we would assign two additional equipment operators to our parks division, which would bring the number, the total number to four individuals working in parks. This was consistent with what our park staffing levels were pre-recession. And this is a number that we feel comfortable with, that we're going to be able to keep up with the grass and, and address some other maintenance concerns that have come up in the park. If this proposal is approved, we're also going to be shifting the responsibility of grass cutting in the street margins from our roads division to our parks division. And we are proposing also to assume the responsibility for grass cutting on abatement properties from the contractor that our ordinance department uses to cut those. The revenues from the abatement grass cutting will partially offset the cost of the additional staff. So there are cost projections in there that are going to be in the budget. We think this is a, a good partnership. We think it'll make sense from a cost standpoint. We think it'll make sense from a staffing and making sure that these properties are getting addressed in a timely manner standpoint. Another change that's going to be supporting our effort in the parks is we've shifted the responsibilities of our foreman. So we have two foremen in DPS. Prior to the change, one was responsible only for our roads division activities. And the other foreman was responsible for our environmental division activities, parks division activities and facility maintenance activities. So one of the changes that we've made is we've taken our environmental division responsibilities and assigned it to our roads foreman. It makes sense from a number of different standpoints. Those two divisions tend to share staff because of the way our union contract and the job descriptions are set up. So it gives that supervisor more direct control over how the staff are allocated. And it also frees up, the main intent of it is to free up time for our other foremen to focus their efforts on parks and facilities which need attention. So that is our proposal with regards to our park staffing. The cost of the equipment operators are spread out through various funds in the city that we operate under. But in total, they will each have with salary, FICA, workman's comp, they'll each have a gross cost, salary cost of about $41,000 plus benefits. Next slide, please. The next area I want to talk about is our major streets fund, which is 202. I am going to touch on these items and be brief about it. We added some budgeted amount for asset management software annual maintenance fees, just about $20,500. That's going to be coming out of our major streets fund. We had a small increase in our surface maintenance motor pool in anticipation of additional cuttings for our street margins. We are going to be adding a couple thousand dollars into our drainage structures funds. We are working through our saw grant and we have an asset management plan for our stormwater, storm water system, a draft plan put together. Some of those preliminary indications, and we're still finalizing everything, but some of those preliminary indications indicate that there should be a bit more investment going on in some of the manholes and storm drains that are around the city. So preliminarily, we've added a couple thousand dollars to do a couple of projects that were identified. But that's something that we're going to be addressing more at a, at a future date. The last item I want to address with major streets or with operating costs of major streets is our winter maintenance. We took our salt delivery from last year late this year. And so due to that, the costs of last year's salt are going to be accounted for in the 2021 budget. So we are going to be, there are going to be some increases in those line items too. Next slide, please. Some of the capital projects that we have that are going to come out of major, major streets that we changed numbers for. The Oakwood resurfacing projects that we have coming up during the summer, we added the rail spur removal on Spring Street to that project in order to make it more efficient. The result of that is there was a net increase in the cost. Some of those costs are going to be offset by an MDOT grant that we're getting for the rail spur removal. And of course, the Oakwood Street Project is a county millage funded project. So we are going to get money from the county street millage to, to complete that. Some other projects that we added funds for were a cross-street bridge replacement study. So the cross-street bridge is eventually going to need to be replaced. One of the, in discussions with our city engineers, the first step in doing this is to put together a replacement study to evaluate how we're going to replace the bridge and look at some of the environmental standards and some of the other guidelines that we have to consider and are going to have to meet. When we replace the bridge, there are endangered species in the Huron River that need to be assessed. Permitting for this bridge can take several years. So we thought it was pertinent to get started now and line everything up. So, you know, we are able to move forward if a grant or some other financing opportunity comes about. We've talked about the Forest Street Bridge Rehab Application. That's a summer 2022 project. We added some funds for that. We've added design engineering funds for North Washington Resurfacing, which is a county millage project. We've added funds for North Huron River Drive Design Engineering. And then the West Cross Parking Lane Rehabilitation Project was going to be in tied to tie in with the MDOT resurfacing project that was going on this summer. But they actually recently just notified us and indicated that they were going to be covering the cost of that. So that's good news. It should save the city about $40,000. Next slide, please. Again, with our local streets fund, we added some money for drainage structures to do a couple extra projects for the next year. For winter maintenance with salt, it's the same instance. We spread our salt costs over several different areas in the funds. This just happens to be the local street fund portion of the increase. Next slide, please. Garbage and refuse collection operating, we had some increases in our administration contractual services. What comes out of this line item is primarily our trash contract fees as well as our dumpster pulls that we have at our DPS yard. So we do, you know, when we do street sweeping, we do storm sewer cleaning, when we do public receptacle trash removal. All of that stuff gets brought back to our yard, placed in a 20-yard dumpster, and then we have it pulled a couple, you know, usually once a week. So we did have some increases in there that we're projecting because we're anticipating to be doing more storm sewer cleaning than we have been. Our staff over the last year was, was not healthy. And over the last several months, we've had a full crew and this spring and summer, we're going to be able to really get back on doing some storm sewer cleaning, which will increase the number of times that those have to be pulled. So we did add some extra money to, to accommodate for that. Recycling contractual fees were increased. So the recovery facility that we take our recycling to has increased their prices over the last year and a half considerably. So we use the WWRA MRF. We were paying $30 a ton for recycling. Now, last year, they increased it to 45 and then recently in the spring, they increased it to $55 a ton. We have shopped around. There are other MRFs that we can take our materials to. However, they all charge upwards of $120 or more per ton. So with WWRA, we still are getting a better deal. We're still making a good fiscal decision. But the, the prices have increased, so we increased the allocation of the budget to reflect that. With the, one of the changes, and this is, there's no additional money that's tied into this, but it is something that stands out. So I wanted to address it with council is that we had a temporary employee to cover some of our staffing shortages throughout a portion of last year. That's covered out of the contracted services line item. So there was a budget adjustment where Luke Sally around and, you know, there was a significant increase in contracted services due to that. So that is the rationale before, for it, but it's a net zero impact. The other items I wanted to highlight is there are money for public recycling containers this year. We're going to address that. We included in the budget some money for recycling carts. We're planning on applying for an Eagle Grant to have recycling carts spread out throughout the city. The Eagle Grant has not been made available this year as of yet. We're still keeping an eye out for it. If not, there may be some other options that we are exploring with recycling carts that we will bring before council at a, at a later date. We have some ideas. We're just not ready to present yet. Next slide, please. So for our sidewalk fund, we are continuing our CDVG and Metro Ramp Program. One of the changes that we had made to our contractual services, as it says on the slide, we added $12,000 for public sidewalk repair. This was as a result of council goals. We also added some, an additional $20,000 for the next fiscal year only. And the reason why we do it, or why we're proposing it is due to scheduling for some of our sidewalk ramp projects. So currently, you know, when the fiscal year starts on July 1st, we start designing the sidewalk work because that's when the funding becomes available. We start doing the engineering bid packages. What ends up happening is we're doing sidewalk construction in October, November. By the time all the bids go through and everything, we get on the schedule and we're taken care of. So what we're proposing is to essentially double the funds for, so for one year, we can do the design in the ramps and then we can start doing the design for the following year. So that way, you know, we can bid it out and we're ready to start construction in July or August. And then subsequently, because we've done that for the one year, the contracted service line item will go back down to 20,000 in future years and we have the ability to, to start doing engineering earlier in the process. So, so that's the basis behind that proposal. Next slide, please. And then lastly, our motor pool fund, we haven't made any changes to the operating of the motor pool fund. And we've actually reduced our motor pool capital request for next year by about $43,000. We've made some replacement schedule changes, which has resulted in some savings. The last item I want to discuss is we do have a couple of capital items that we have proposed in the budget. One is for the propane filling station that we've discussed. So I won't go too far into it, but we've requested $60,000 to complete that. And then we've also requested $25,000 to do a break room renovation in our DPS facility. Just to new furniture, new lockers, just to modernize what our staff has a little bit. So with that, I apologize it took us long. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Go for it, Mr. Morgan.
I just have one question. Thank you so much. It was longer than others, but we're here for it. But thank you. The last item you mentioned about the propane service station, are you requesting that as a different line item or with surplus from the motor pool with the new vehicle?
We put it in the capital improvement plan, so I believe it's going to be listed as a capital project as a 414, either 414 account.
So the surplus from buying a truck that's going to go back into whatever fund it came out of? Once we purchased the truck that we disapproved?
Yes, it will go back under fund balance.
Thank you.
I'm not sure where this is appropriate, but well, I asked the obvious question first. Can you get that in a hybrid? Cross-street bridge replacement was, was any money proposed for the earmark funds?
For that?
And what, what did that look like?
So our project manager, Bonnie Westler, submitted a proposal under, there, there was a transportation infrastructure. And we did make a request for the full $6 million to replace the bridge. Where that goes from here, I'm not quite sure, but, but we did request it.
Okay. When you're talking about the drainage, the storm drains and things like When you're talking about the drainage, the storm drains and things like that, now, how much is green infrastructure put into that? That could, that, I know it's hard in a city like Ypsilanti with so much impervious services, surfaces, but has that been brought into the equation oftentimes that can save money?
There's really, when we looked at the SAW plan and the asset management plan, we looked at primarily our storm sewer system. And we looked at more so the condition of the storm sewer system, we looked at, you know, what proper cleaning looks like of our storm sewer system and a lot of our, I guess environmentally sound measures are street sweeping, do it, you know, cleaning out the storm sewers, you know, making sure that things that shouldn't be getting into the river aren't getting into the river. There's not a component for, you know, low impact development or green structures in our asset management plan, but it's still under draft form. I can chat with OHM and see if there's a provision and some ideas that they can add into that that would help improve that situation in the city.
Okay, thanks. You were talking about the increased cost of recycling because the Murph tipping fees are getting getting higher. Do you have any idea when the Murph at Ellsworth and Platt will be back online? I know there was some discussion with Recycle and Arbor and getting that started up again.
There is a tentative October date where they will be back online. I know they're actively working on it. They are still transporting recyclables to the Murph, I believe it's in Cincinnati. I'm not sure if it's Cincinnati or Lansing, but they are, they are shipping out their recyclables. I don't know what those costs are going to be associated with the Murph. We did do a preliminary estimate to kind of see what the savings would be, you know, for staff time, carbon offsets, or, you know, vehicle time, fuel, just to kind of get an idea because it's a shorter drive there than it is a Chelsea. And I think it ended up coming out to, it's like twelve or fifteen dollars per ton based on the volume that we have in the city. So, you know, when we do get pricing, we're going to have to take a look to see, you know, what makes more financial sense and what our solid waste fund can handle. But that's going to be an analysis once we, once we get an idea. One of the advantages is with Warma is actually Ann Arbor had voted to join Warma. And there were provisions in the contract that Ann Arbor has with Recycle and Arbor to run the Murph that where Warma members, if Ann Arbor was a member, could get certain discounts. What those are, I don't know, but it's something that we're certainly going to stay tuned on.
It's interesting, I would think that the Murph would be clamoring for, it's a weird development because the city of Ann Arbor is trying to like undercut Recycle and Arbor for the last several years, so hopefully that would turn into a better price point for us. The other thing I was looking at was, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate here with the parking, but, you know, with the water street development, one of the things that I was continually trying to get across is, you know, there's impervious surfaces there that have been planned. People have been clamoring for a parking garage in Depot Town, something like that, but with the with the new development, it seems like that would be, you know, interesting place to put that. And whether we could include that in budgets going forward in terms for, you know, when we talk with the the developers, they were like, well, if the city wants to fund that, that's fine, but we're not going to deal with it. And, you know, the question of whether we need to do feasibility study for for something like that and where that comes from, whether that comes from from you and the parking or whether that comes from economic development or a combination of the two. But I think going in the next couple of years while that is is ramping up, I definitely think that would be a good thing to at least spend some time studying, so.
I I don't want to speak for project manager Westler, but I do know they are soliciting quotes from engineering firms to look at that very issue.
Thanks.
There are no further questions for Ron, I'll share my screen again and we'll move on to the parking fund with Bonnie Westler.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. I will do my best to keep this brief, Andrew, if you could advance the slide. So a quick recap of this budget year's performance. In short, it was not very great, we didn't have any meter revenue from the middle of July onward. We do expect to begin collecting meter revenue again in May. Parking permit fee revenue was down significantly from projections because of the reduced enrollment at Eastern Michigan University perhaps, but there's of course also other conflating factors and parking ticket fine revenue was quite a bit down from projections. All in all, we came in a little more than two hundred thousand dollars less in revenue this year than we had anticipated. And the parking fund is going to be subsidized by the general fund this year, unfortunately. But we did manage to accomplish a few things this year. We did upgrade our enforcement software to coordinate with the new kiosks and online payment as well as pay by phone. We council did approve the fine amnesty for tickets from two thousand eighteen and older. We updated the Parking Violations Bureau rules to allow for some more flexibility with tickets in certain cases. And we implemented fifteen minute parking in certain areas of business districts to support the takeout and carryout and quick pickup services that people needed. Next, next slide, oh, you got it. Moving into the next budget year, we've made a few assumptions that the meter fee revenue is going to return to pre-pandemic levels of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year almost. Permit revenue is still going to be a little bit lower than projections because of some of the new shifts we're seeing to online services overall, but also online schooling and the potentially the relocation of the business school. Ticket fine revenue is probably going to remain steady, but we will, only time will tell. Our various costs and operating costs and staffing will remain constant. So as far as capital costs go and capital plans go, we don't have any reserves currently due to the pandemic depletions. And so we're planning some minimal capital improvements, so there are some emergency repairs. We know that some of our lots need particulars, particularly some storm structures. We are planning to help contribute to a parking study in Frog Island, when I say, or in Depot Town rather. And when I say parking study, I don't mean similar to what we did in twenty eighteen as far as levels of usage. I mean something practical with regards to construction of either improved lot or an improved, new and improved parking structure. We'll be speaking a lot with the Depot Town merchants and the public as, and of course, council as those plans progress. Next slide. With all of that in mind, we are planning in the coming year to shift to online permits. This will give us a slight increase in cost in twenty-one, twenty-two to both materials and the fees that were charged by our online vendor for permits. I will be proposing some updates to our fee schedule when the time comes to support that. And we're allocating seventy thousand dollars or requesting rather seventy thousand dollars for capital expenses in the coming year. Next slide. And future projects, reiterating what I said before, what will be revising the fee schedule. One of the fun things that we're looking at is potentially allowing for discounts for people with low income for the residential permits. We're going to keep an eye on our hourly rates and our margins for that because of the impact that paying online and buy app and via credit card has on the overall cost to accept payment. And we're looking at the possibility of creating a community service program where people can either sort of buy off residential permits or perhaps beg forgiveness for tickets. And so we're working with our legal department and other people to figure out if that is something that is feasible for us. Capital projects include the continuation of pursuing additional parking in the Depot Town area, ongoing maintenance, and of course, the signage improvements. That's really it for parking, pretty brief. Are there any questions?
I just have one question, Ms. Westler. It's always good to hear you give us the reports. Did it say that in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two that two hundred and twenty-five thousand was what we usually secure from parking fines?
That is what we, yes, that's about average.
So how many people do we have actually writing tickets? Because that's, that's close to eighteen thousand five hundred hours per month, which is almost forty-seven hundred hours per week. That's a, I mean, I don't know what percentage of that is in our budget, but it seems very substantial. Um. Cost.
So we have two people writing tickets currently. But it's important to remember that that revenue isn't just the base ticket fine, it's also the the late fees and fine increases. So currently, if you'll refer to your fee schedule, we do increases of twenty dollars after, I want to say it's sixty days and then ninety days and then I want to say a hundred and eighty days, but I don't actually have the fee schedule right in front of me.
So negligence increases are, are what people failures to pay on time kind of increases are, okay, thank you so much.
If there are no more questions regarding parking, we can go on to the capital improvements, which is also Bonnie.
Can I interrupt here to make a motion to extend? Given that we've got ten minutes before ten o'clock.
Support.
How much time are we going to need for this?
Ten thirty, let's go to ten thirty, how many more presentations we have?
Mayor, I think you're muted.
Sorry, yes, I wanted, was thinking of asking before Bonnie started, but definitely, please extend it to eleven o'clock.
Okay, I'm going to extend to eleven o'clock.
All right, I shall endeavor to fill the next hour and fifteen minutes, thank you.
Council needs to vote.
Gosh.
Take your time.
It's just a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
All right, our capital improvements begins, next slide, please.
Wait, wait, I need to.
So as you all know, a capital program identifies our major capital expenditures for the coming six years. It helps us guide our budgeting process, not just for the coming two, but beyond that as well. It helps us communicate major projects to the public. It also helps us learn more about the budgeting process. It's required for our redevelopment ready certification, it's required by the charter and it is also required by the state law. Next slide, please. So when we are looking at our capital plan, we are pulling from the current year's council goals, which are perfectly legible there on the left side of the PowerPoint slide. And also we pull from the master plan goals, so as you see, these are the adopted master plan goals, we only pull from adopted goals, not from draft goals. And those stay relatively constant over a period of about five to ten years. Next slide. Here in front of you is the entirety of our capital projects plan through twenty-seven, twenty-eight. As you can see, things are laid out by the project, then with the dollar amount that the city would be responsible for in each fiscal year. In the full spreadsheet, we have a lot of other information such as the funding source, the requesting department, the level of priority each department has placed on their project, their justification for their project and the many different accounts that get pulled into this. So this overview involves projects from all of the funds that the city draws from to perform capital and capital projects. That's the four-one-four fund, which you've heard other people reference, that's the general fund capital account, the six forty-one account, which is motor pool, the two oh two and two oh three, which are roads, five one four, which is parking. These are all things which I expect you to have fully memorized by the end of tonight's meeting. Next slide, please. But what's of most interest to you probably are the general fund capital project. So these are the projects for which there's not a dedicated funding stream already allocated to them. So this is for such things as the break room renovations at DPS, the fire department, police department. Actually, police department's not this year, so forget about that. Also, our facility partner projects at Park Ridge Senior Center, et cetera. So here you'll see on the far left is a key, so it's a random index number that has been assigned to each project. So when we talk about a project, we can say, well, it's project number twenty-three. That's the DPS pave parking, not the fire department's paved parking or the parkings paved parking. So it helps us identify each project, the requesting department, project name, the the reasons for doing the project, so strategic is something that helps us reach our goals. Risk avoidance will either save us money or help us not spend money in the future. Mandatory is mandatory. There's also a fourth category which doesn't appear on this, which is essentially a nice to have category. So at the bottom, you'll see a total of the funding requests per year. So in the first year, it totals four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars approximately. Year two, which is twenty-two, twenty-three, totals over three million dollars and that is largely because of the Pennsylar Dam removal project. After that, things peter out, it's mainly driven by our motor motor pool spending and the computer replacement. As we get closer to years twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, et cetera, this project list does get rather more flushed out. Next slide, please. Here we have our motor pool project, so this is fund six forty-one. Each department pays into the motor pool fund and it carries capital across the year so that we can afford to replace our vehicles when we need to. Our spending next year is actually fairly low for us, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The year after, we have a couple of larger replacements coming up and so we're closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's largely driven by DPS purchases, a recycling yard waste rear loader truck and a street sweeper. Street sweepers are pretty essential to the health of our storm sewers as well as our roads. And of course, we all love our recycling and yard waste vehicles because they help keep the city clean and healthy. After that, we're averaging about five hundred thousand dollars a year, go ahead, Andrew, thank you. So here we have a number of vehicles per department as well as approximately the number of vehicles that get replaced per year. This slide we inserted to help explain to you, each department has their own vehicle replacement schedule that had come up as a question from council in the past. Some, some departments don't have many vehicles like community and economic development. They have essentially the code enforcement two vehicles and then building department three vehicles, they replace one about every other year. DPS has quite a few more vehicles and police also have quite a few vehicles. The replacements are driven by the overall expected lifespan of each vehicle. And we do, of course, have an inventory of all of the vehicles that we have. This slide does not correlate to the CIP because we can sometimes extend our vehicles lifespan, sometimes our vehicles lifespans are sadly cut short. So these are ranges, these are our best guess and best estimates, and these will be tied in more closely to the CIP. But of course, the capital improvement plan is an ever evolving project and gets better every year. So I believe that sums up or that ends our capital improvement. So I believe that sums up or that ends our capital improvement discussion tonight. If anybody has any questions, I can probably stretch it out for another hour and 10 minutes if needed.
Thank you. I don't think that will be necessary.
I've got a list here. It goes up to 56.
That's all?
Yeah. I had one question about the the second year in the capital improvement for the dam that that was $2.7 million. But we've never committed that to, I mean, we only committed $500,000, right?
Yes. However, some grants are via reimbursement. Some grants are not. So there's grants that are via reimbursement where we essentially have to carry the cost and we get paid back over time. There are grants where somebody else writes all of the the checks during it and then we get a bill at the end. And then there's other grants where somebody simply pays for the project. We don't know the details of this final grant. And so this is sort of the biggest number that we might have to worry about even just for cash flow, more or less.
Okay, so it's the worst case scenario and realizing that most of that isn't actually going to come from city budget.
Correct.
Any other?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought you were through. Yeah, it's okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seen now. Clokealing of the next item.
The next item is the adjournment, but I don't know if the city manager had anything further.
No, I don't have anything.
So then just the adjournment.
Okay, and I declare this meeting adjourned.
Support.
Everyone have a good night. Good night.